I'll call to order the January ninth, February ninth, 2016 Placer County Board of Supervisors, and we'll start with a flag salute led by Supervisor Holmes.
Our allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jim. Now could we have our meeting procedures read, please?
Welcome to the Placer County Board of Supervisors meeting of Tuesday, February ninth, 2016. Agendas are available on the wall outside this meeting room. If you are here to speak on an issue not appearing on the agenda, you may do so during the public comment period. However, please note that the board is not permitted to take action on items addressed under public comment. All items on the agenda will be open for public comments before final action is taken. When you speak, clearly state your name for the record and be aware there is a three-minute time limit per speaker. Keep in mind that the chairman has a discretion of limiting the total discussion time on any item. Please place all cell phones in silent mode. If you are hearing impaired, we have listening devices available. Thank you for cooperation and participation.
Thank you. Next is our consent agenda. This is a list of items that are supposed to be considered by the board all in one motion, but if anybody would like us to remove them or if any of my colleagues want something to be removed, we can discuss it individually. Is there anyone from the audience who'd like to have something discussed from the consent agenda? Would that all entertain a motion?
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the consent calendar. Roll call, please.
Holmes?
Yes.
Iran?
Yes.
Euler?
Montgomery?
Yes.
Wigan?
Yes. Now is the time for public comment. This is a time when anyone from the public can address the board on something that is not on the agenda, keeping in mind that we can take no action on that. Please come forward and state your name for the record.
It's not on the agenda, but specifically what I wanted to talk about briefly is the ongoing, I guess, financial difficulties of all the local fire departments. And I guess my take on this, I'm not, I haven't educated myself enough to understand all the finances and things, but my take on it is back when these local fire departments were formed, they were there to go put out fires, structure fires, grass fires, whatever. The fire department has had to expand their role into anything and everything, EMT, car wrecks, you name it, they go out and do it. And yet they still operate on, I guess, their special assessed taxes. I'm sympathetic to the fact that the state took a lot of the money that went into public safety back in ninety-three, ninety-four, I guess it was, and then we passed Prop 172 to try to replace some of that money. So I understand how the fire departments were spared from those cuts, how the sheriff and the district attorney, so forth, looks at that money and says, "They took my money away, they gave me some money back, that's my money." But it's not their money. It's the taxpayers' money, and you guys get to decide how it's spent. I think if we consider the fact the fire department has a huge expanding role, I don't think it's appropriate for property owners to finance EMT services alone, by themselves, for someone who may be traveling in a vehicle from another country, another state, coming through, getting a car wreck, heart attacks, all those things they do, I think it's appropriate that some of that 172 money that was approved for public safety could go to the local fire departments. I'm in Penrin, not just the Penrin, but others. And we have to recognize that equipment fails, they have to replace it, they have to keep up to provide those services, and I think that you guys have a responsibility to assist in providing some level of money from the 172 funds. And I may be way off base, but that's the way I feel today. So I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning.
We're here to introduce ourselves. My name is David Morikawa. I'm the program director for Meals on Wheels by ACC, and this is Michelle Bustamante, the program specialist for Meals on Wheels by ACC here for the western Placer County. We've been in the area since January of 2014, providing home-delivered meals to the west Placer County area, and there are hundreds of seniors in need of healthy nutritious meals, safety checks, and really smiles from our volunteers to complete their day. Together, we've been able to help seniors live in their own homes and where, really, where they want to be, just like you and I. We want to be able to live where we wish, and we're able to help our seniors be able to live where they wish to live. Next month is March, it's Nutrition Month, also March for Meals, and we hope that you'll be joining us next month in taking a stand so that our seniors are not forgotten in this area. Any questions?
I see none, but thank you. Good to have you here and appreciate your efforts.
Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else who'd like to address the board on something that is not on the agenda? Seeing none, I'll move to Supervisor Committee Reports. I see no committee reports. Are we early enough, Chair? Close enough? It's officially nine-ten, and therefore I'm going to take up the first timed item. And it is a commendation to George Alves, so I'm going to read it, and then George, you can come up to the podium and rebut anything that might be on here. I'll just, I have another thought, but I'll save that. After graduated from high school in nineteen sixty-nine, which is the same year I graduated from high school, now the world knows how old we are, or, I think everybody does. This is deteriorating quickly. George joined the United States Navy and faithfully, honorably, and courageously served the nation for eight years as an aviation electronics technician on the Lockheed Orion P3 sub chaser aircraft. Whereas in nineteen seventy-seven, George transitioned from the Navy to start a thirty-five career with Hewlett Packard. And in nineteen eighty-one, George, along with his wife Ruth, who carried Supervisor Holmes as his administrative aide for many years and did a great job keeping him out of trouble. To a next deal. Two children, Matthew and Lindsay, decided to move back to their small-town roots. George applied for a transfer with HP and came to the Roseville facility at a time when Lincoln had a population of four thousand people. Now it's over ten times that. Whereas in nineteen eighty-six, George joined the Page Volunteer Fire Department with his wife, faithfully served the citizens of the Page area through nineteen ninety-seven, then transferred to the Fowler Station where he served for an additional four years for a total of sixteen years of dedicated and honorable service as a volunteer firefighter. During his volunteer fighting service, George successfully recruited four other key volunteers, his wife Ruth, his son Matthew, his daughter Lindsay, and his future daughter-in-law Denise. Also during his sixteen years as volunteer, George earned State Fire Marshal firefighter one certificate, his Emergency Medical Technician one A rating, and progressed through the ranks to fire engineer and ultimately fire station captain. In two thousand and seven, George was asked to put his experience in firefighting, logistics, and project management to good use as Placer County Fire Mitigation Coordinator. As the first ever fire mitigation coordinator, George mentored, developed, and spearheaded the Fire Safe Alliance, multiple Fire Safe Councils, Firewise Community Programs into a robust and effective change driver that they are today. These programs provide both fire, critical public education, obtaining invaluable grant funding for fuels management, fire prevention projects, and programs across the entire county during which his tenure has exceeded three million dollars. Therefore, let it be resolved that the Board of Supervisors has officially given you this commendation, George. Please come to the podium and I'll present it to you.
Still waiting for that other comment you had in reserve. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's been a privilege to support the citizens of Placer County. I'd like to thank the Board of Supervisors for recognition, sorry. Without the support of the board, the executive office, and Office of Emergency Services, we never would have been able to achieve many of the fire mitigation projects that we had attempted. I'd also like to recognize the members of the Placer County Fire Safe Alliance, the four Fire Safe Councils, members of OES, Placer County Resource Conservation District, all of those individuals come together on a monthly basis. We get fifteen to twenty to now thirty people coming to this meeting, and it's all volunteer. They're coming, all the resources are put together and trying to figure out better ways to support the communities. So with that, I really appreciate that, and I'd just say that the time spent as a Placer County fire volunteer, as well as a fire mitigation coordinator, was my privilege. Thank you.
Thank you, George. And thanks for.
Mr. Chair, George, I just wanted to congratulate you as well, and I need to recognize that, so everybody knows that behind every good man is a great woman, and I want to thank Ruth for her, what, more than ten years with the, or thirteen years as my, and most of that was as my loyal aide, and we can't forget that Ruth has been by your side through this whole journey. So congratulations to both of you.
Thank you.
Well, George, you're leaving.
George, George.
Before you leave, I really wanted to take the opportunity to say thank you sincerely for all your works with the Fire Safe Council. That was largely the relationship that you and I had working on those fire safety issues, and I think that really due to your leadership, Placer County, long before dying flammable forests were sexy in the news, Placer County was taking real leadership on that, on that issue, and I think that's very much due to your leadership and your efforts. And so while I'm delighted that you retired, I'm also really sad that you retired because you were just an incredible asset to Placer County generally, and so all the best of everything. I know you and Ruth are already having a great time exploring the bigger world than just Placer County. Ruth's shaking her head back there, "Yes, let's go, honey." But I really just did want to say thank you because you put in just efforts above and beyond the call of duty on behalf of greater Placer County, but the Sierra Nevada as a whole, and I really appreciate that, so thank you.
Thank you.
And you can't leave the Mac yet.
No, I plan on sticking around. And there is a Fire Safe Council in our area that may have an open seat, so I may be considering that move. So you haven't gotten rid of me yet, but, and it's good, as you know, I've been replaced by Luana Dowling, and she's got a lot more experience than I do in that process, so you're in great hands, and I'm sure the process and the activity is going to continue.
Thank you, George. Next item is the Placer County Health Update presented by Dr. Oldham. Good morning.
Thank you, Chairman Wigan, members of the board, Rob Oldham, your health officer. I appreciate the chance to provide your board and the people of Placer County with a brief update on the health of Placer County, including celebrating some of the significant achievements in 2015 and also highlighting some challenges that we're tackling in 2016. I'd like to take this opportunity to acknowledge Kim Tran, who is on loan to us from the U.S. Centers for Disease Control and Prevention through the Public Health Associates Program. Kim is the latest in a long line of very talented and energetic associates we have hosted through this fabulous program, and I'm sure you'll agree with me that Kim did a tremendous job in designing and organizing this prezi presentation that I'll be using today. So thank you, Kim. She's here, yes. We'll navigate through this prezi here. So the, each year during these updates, I'd just like to remind everyone about the role of public health, and as your health officer and as public health, we have unique roles and roles that really intersect with the healthcare delivery system, but is distinct from kind of traditional healthcare delivery. So on this slide, you'll see the responsibilities of public health organized as the ten essential services of public health. Some of these services are more visible or more easy to understand than others. However, each of them is essential for effective public health system, and they each really rely upon each other very heavily. So virtually everything we do in public health, including today's health update, can be linked to this list of essential services. So when something we're doing aligns with one or more of these essential services, we're trying to be more mindful about explicitly defining which of the ten essential services we're fulfilling. This helps us to make sure that all of the essential services get adequate attention. Today, you'll see a demonstration of elements of essential service number one, which is monitoring community health status to identify community health problems, essential service number three, which is informing, educating, and empowering people about health issues, and essential service number four, mobilizing community partnerships to identify and solve health problems. Once again, in 2015, Placer County was rated the second healthiest county in California in the Robert Wood Johnson Foundation County Health Rankings. This is certainly worth celebrating. Of course, we celebrate this distinction with our public health community and even in the broader healthcare delivery sector, but truly this is a county-wide effort. Our achievement is testimony not just to the success of our public health system, but to the strength of our local economy, businesses, governments, schools, parks, and community organizations. And ultimately, it's an accomplishment of all Placer County residents who make healthy choices for themselves and the people they care about. So congratulations, Placer County, and keep up the good work. So we should celebrate and build on this accomplishment, not just because it's nice being on top of the heap, but also because a healthier Placer County is so strategically connected to the overall strength of our county and its future. This slide demonstrates the complementary relationship between health, quality of life, and economic development. Improvements in any one of these areas tends to lead to improvements in the others. So before I talk about some specific health indicators and some of the major challenges that we face in Placer County, I want to take a few minutes to recognize a few of the many accomplishments of our public health system in 2015. These few snapshots are far from an exhaustive list of our achievements. Rather, these snapshots just scratch the surface in describing the accomplishments of a host of dedicated professionals whom I am privileged to call colleagues and whose work by its very nature often goes undetected. Public health, at least when it's functioning properly, largely flies under the radar of public view. So while much of public health activities are inherently under the radar, we saw an opportunity in 2015 to better engage with our community. Our public health system had weathered the Great Recession largely by focusing internally on its mandated functions. We saw an opportunity to more intentionally engage our community in 2015, so we provided leadership in convening a diverse group of community partners to take a collective impact approach to improving Placer County's health. We are calling this the Placer Partnership for Public Health, or PPPH. This slide shows a sample of the many organizations who have engaged in this partnership. Unlike some other convenings that offer funding to participating organizations, there currently is no real funding source for this partnership. Rather, partners show up to meetings simply because of their commitment to shared learning and to making a collective impact to improve Placer County's health. We really have learned a great deal from each other and inspired each other. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the many members of our partnership for their participation and invite any other organizations who are interested in learning more about our partnership to contact me. We would love to have you join us. One of the major deliverables of the partnership in the next year will be the completion of a community health assessment and community health improvement plan that will eventually inform the strategic plan for our entire public health system. We have selected an evidence-based process called MAP to systematically complete these objectives. MAP stands for Mobilizing for Action Through Planning and Partnerships. This process involves a huge amount of work and organization, again, with no additional funding. The fact that we are on track to complete this process in the next year is testimony to the hard work and commitment of our partners and of several of our colleagues in the Public Health Division who have really gone above and beyond to support this effort because they believe in it and because they care deeply about the health of Placer County. You'll see a number of these colleagues and partners in this photo from one of our recent MAP work group meetings. Special thanks within the Public Health Division to Mike Romero, who you see here in the picture, along with Sarah Hagan, Jenny Johnson, one of our other CDC associates, and Shannon Ng. Also not pictured is Joe Arsenath, our manager, who is organizing these programs. So PPPH and MAP are largely directed at the organizations and professionals that make up our public health system. However, at the same time, we're trying to engage with all residents of Placer County through a campaign we're calling Be Well Placer. Up until now, Be Well Placer has almost exclusively targeted Placer County employees. Along with our colleagues in Human Resources, we will be coming to your board in the future to recognize the accomplishments of our employees through participation in Be Well Placer activities. However, today, we're beginning to the launch of Be Well Placer out to all Placer County residents, not just our county employees. And the first part of this launch is the unveiling of our Be Well Placer Community Dashboard, which you will find online at placerdashboard.org. This dashboard provides a one-stop shop that allows anyone who can point and click to explore a wide array of data that relates to the health of Placer County. On this dashboard, you will find traditional health metrics like the prevalence of different diseases, but you'll also find measures of other important determinants of health, such as the availability of housing, jobs, and educational opportunity. You don't have to be an epidemiologist in order to navigate this site. In fact, you really don't even have to spell, be able to spell epidemiologist, but I hope you'll find that this experience is user-friendly and kind of intuitive. For example, here's a screenshot that a user could see after clicking on a particular metric from placerdashboard.org. Each measure is color-coded based upon how we compare to statewide or nationwide benchmarks on the measure. The green indicates that we're better than the benchmark, yellow is an area where we're not doing quite as well, and red indicates an area where we may be falling short. Because we are a relatively healthy county, you'll find that we are green on most of our measures. However, you'll also find there are a number of measures where we're in the yellow or even in the red. Here's an example of one measure, hospitalization rate due to mental health complaints, where we're in the red. You can kind of see, compare also to other counties in the region, how we're doing. Here's another screenshot that shows how you can look at several indicators at one time. Here you see one indicator in the green, which is people with a usual source of health care. Another indicator where we're in the, kind of the yellow or almost orange, it looks like, adults needing and receiving behavioral health care services, and finally one where we're far over in the red, severe housing problems. In addition to wanting to be transparent with indicators of how we're doing in different areas, we also hope to use the Placer Dashboard as a way to show what we're, what we are doing or what we could be doing to actually improve the indicators that we prioritize through our community health assessment and community health improvement plan. We can modify this dashboard to highlight certain priority metrics and add information to the dashboard, dashboard about local programs that are addressing particular priority indicators. This screenshot from Placer Dashboard shows a resource library of national best practices that have been proven to be successful in addressing various community health issues, and then various grants and other funding sources that we, that might assist us in implementing various best practices. I encourage you to check out placerdashboard.org and think about which of these metrics resonate with you, which ones we want to prioritize, and what programs and resources we might further develop locally to make Placer even healthier. So transitioning to our tobacco program, one of our kind of highlighted areas of success in the last year, the science is clear that there's no safe level of second-hand smoke. One of the national best practices that we've implemented in 2015 was through a contract with the California Department of Public Health to promote smoke-free campuses at health care facilities. The scope of work in the contract has been somewhat of a challenge for us, as our own county government health care facilities are really not able to go smoke-free until we implement an overall smoke-free campus policy at our county government facilities. By the way, we hope to come to your board in the future to propose how we might fix that problem. In the meantime, our program and other health care facilities wanting to go smoke-free have received a tremendous amount of support from Kimberly Cole, a nurse at Sutter Roseville Medical Center, who was a great advocate for and resource on smoke-free health care facilities. Here are some photos of us recently presenting Kim with a plaque honoring her achievements at Sutter Roseville Medical Center. And is Kim here? Yeah, probably not. I hear, you know, someone was smoking on campus at Sutter Roseville, so Kim probably had to go and intervene. She's all over that, but thanks, Kim, for all of your great work. So the epidemic of prescription drug misuse leading to addiction and overdoses is a growing concern. In the U.S. since nineteen ninety-nine, there's been a quadrupling in the number of prescribed painkillers and also a fourfold increase in the number of overdose deaths from these medications. In 2015, we decided it was time to take more action on this issue in Placer County. In collaboration with the Placer Nevada County Medical Society and Nevada County Health and Human Services, we applied for and received a competitive grant through the California Healthcare Foundation to form a physician-led opioid safety coalition in both Placer and Nevada Counties. This coalition just started late last year and has already enjoyed tremendous participation from local physician leaders, clinics, hospitals, law enforcement, community groups, and treatment programs. We hope to have a public kickoff event for our coalition activities on April thirtieth in conjunction with countywide prescription drug take-back events, and we'll be encouraging any interested board members or the public to participate in these kickoff events. As I mentioned before, sometimes public health functions best when we are under the radar. There's probably no better example of this in 2015 than our efforts to monitor travelers from West Africa for signs and symptoms of Ebola as they return to Placer County. This was a completely new process for us, and our staff did a great job of responding to this novel situation in a highly competent and professional manner. We kept the public safe while providing great customer service to returning travelers, many of whom were heroes of the Ebola response in West Africa. But at the same time, we did not want to call too much attention to our activities and therefore add to the Ebola hysteria that was sweeping the nation at the time. Here's a photo of some of our Ebola response team, which includes from left to right, Senior Public Health Nurse Kimberly Sennell, Health Educator Cara Miller, and Wendy Taylor, our supervising public health nurse for communicable disease. Thanks to Wendy, Cara, Kim, and all of our Ebola response team, despite our trying to keep our monitoring efforts under wraps, one of the heroes of the Ebola response in West Africa insisted on documenting the professionalism and competence of our Ebola response team for the world to see on international news. So the achievement of 2015 I will end on is the steady advance we've made in Placer County to address vaccination rates for vaccine-preventable illnesses. Fortunately, the statewide measles outbreak associated with Disneyland never made it to Placer County, but we continue to see historic rates of pertussis, or whooping cough, a vaccine-preventable illness that has really made a comeback in recent years. And of course, every year, tens of thousands of Americans die from influenza complications. Many of these deaths could be prevented by just getting an annual flu shot. In 2015, we really redoubled our efforts to get Placer vaccinated. We recently received data that showed a significant increase in the number of kindergarteners in Placer schools who were fully vaccinated in 2015. Hats off again to Wendy Taylor, Meg Dorsey, Candy Jensen, and to many other public health staff and various community partners who did so much great work in 2015 to get Placer Finally, I'd like to end with my thoughts about how some of the health challenges, some of the challenges we'll be taking on in 2016 and beyond. So first, I'd mentioned before, number one, that we're really looking forward to completing our community health assessment in 2016. This will inform our community health improvement plan and then our ongoing strategic planning for the whole public health system. Very related to that is our goal of improving our health data analysis, sharing, and transparency. So you'll see, for instance, with the placerdashboard.org, that we're wanting to put more and more health data out for the public, for other organizations that want to go after grants, and also to add more value in analyzing that data for the community, for policymakers, for anyone who needs that service. We're in the process of interviewing for our first epidemiologist in many years for the, you know, division, but will also support all of HHS and actually, you know, is available for the whole county to analyze data. The third goal around ensuring access to care, actually with the Affordable Care Act, there are a number of people who didn't have health coverage before that now do, but really the ongoing challenge, one, is they're still, there's kind of a remaining uninsured population that were, get their health care manually through the emergency departments, but also the, you know, people with added coverage like with CoverCalifornia and Medi-Cal, especially for specialty care and some other services, are still having some major access problems. The fourth thing that we're focusing on closely in 2016 is continuing to improve on our immunization rates, and specifically, you know, there's SB 277, which takes away the personal belief exemption for children in schools. Implementation of that is going to be Implementation of that is going to be a major effort in 2016. So we're going to be focusing on that and really supporting our school systems in that effort. Number five, continued competent response to emerging infectious diseases. You know, last year, we had measles and Ebola, things that we, you know, didn't think, you know, were, when I was going through school, that we would never imagine, you know, having to think about in the United States on a significant scale. Now, there's the reports of Zika virus. So we really have to stay on our toes. So although much of public health is really transitioning to chronic disease prevention, so those are the major causes now in our country of death and disability, we still can't take our eye off the ball particularly with, on infectious disease, particularly with these emerging infectious diseases that keep springing up. So I mentioned the focus, really, that we're transitioning and trying to put a lot more effort into prevention of chronic diseases, which are the major cause of disability and death in the United States and in Placer County. Number seven, increased involvement in policy and planning, which is kind of related to number six. It's not just about making sure people have access to healthcare, but also other things like places where they can go exercise and other policies that promote health. Number eight, creation of an integrated treatment system for substance use disorder. So this is really an opportunity that we're going to have in 2016. The counties have always had responsibility for substance use treatment, however, not a lot of resources. So in 2016, there'll really be an opportunity for some counties, including Placer County, to really design our own system and have some local ownership of that substance use disorder system, treatment system. Number nine, creation of a whole-person care system for people experiencing serious mental illnesses and their homelessness. This is a passion of mine, so I'm also a psychiatrist. And really, what got me interested in public health and preventive medicine was this idea that people with serious mental illness live two to three decades less, have two or three decades less life expectancy than the general population. And that is, I think, a travesty to them and their families, but also it ends up, they end up costing the system a lot of money, not just for their psychiatric care, but their medical care. And so this is an opportunity, again, there are pilots out there available to fund kind of a whole-person care system for these populations that will save lives and save money. And finally, I'll end on number 10. The fact that our emergency medical care system is having some capacity and throughput issues currently. So we're, it's now much more of a routine that some of our hospitals are on internal disaster, you know, multiple nights per week, which we didn't used to see really at all. Part of the issue certainly is 5150s, so people who are there, and you saw the statistics about people who are in the emergency department because of mental health concerns. And so we're really trying to work through our Emergency Medical Care Committee, through our Mental Health Advisory Board, on focusing on some of these issues. So with that, Chairman Wagan, I will conclude my annual Placer Health update. Again, I really appreciate the opportunity to provide this update and for your time and interest in this important area. I invite your questions and comments now. And of course, I'm always available throughout the year to engage with this board and the people of Placer County to address the health challenges and opportunities that we face. Thank you.
Thanks, Rob. Great, great report. Any questions or comments from Jim?
Thank you for this report, Dr. Oldham. I wanted to talk to you about the psychiatric health facilities in the area. Is there a shortfall in the amount of beds for 5150 and people that need that kind of care?
Yeah, so the question about the, what is the right number of psychiatric beds? So as you know, we run a, our own psychiatric health facility, 16-bed unit down in Roseville at Kirby Hills. And that facility increasingly is at capacity. So this is a question really all over the country and certainly in California, is what is the right number of inpatient psychiatric hospital beds? Generally, the feeling is yes, we could use more beds. As far as understanding what that number is, it's an evolving number. Again, you see that on the placer dashboard, that we hospitalize more than other counties do as well. So much of our efforts have been at trying to not hospitalize so much, right? So to, because that has a huge cost, but also it takes away the rights of people. So if we can connect them to other supports in the community without hospitalizing them, that's an important intervention. However, with that said, there, you know, certainly, it seems right now, and you talk to our hospitals and people, especially the docs who work in the emergency departments, they say, we got to do something now. So we, the general thinking, and I would also invite Maureen Bowman's take on this, is that we could probably use some additional psychiatric bed capacity, yes.
So if someone ends up in the emergency room with a psychiatric problem, a 5150, they have to stay there until a social worker can evaluate them and then send them off, find a bed for them? And the county facility on Kirby Hills, is that just for indigenous population, people that don't have insurance?
Correct. Or people with Medi-Cal. Those are kind of the priority populations for our 16-bed unit. But you're right. One of the, so really, the issue isn't so much, it's, we have staff that'll go evaluate people in the emergency room, and that's usually not the bottleneck. We can respond pretty quickly. It's like you mentioned, finding a bed. So sometimes it's having a bed, you know, for, if they have commercial insurance, then often they're not eligible to come to our psychiatric health facility. We kind of reserve that for people with Medi-Cal or who are uninsured. But also, the issue, there are sometimes there are medical issues. So again, people, and you saw the slide about people with serious mental illness and their medical issues, they have more and more chronic medical conditions that might make them not eligible for placement in our psychiatric health facility. There are certain medical things that preclude, for instance, you can't have an IV, you can't have things that could cause, basically cause a danger to yourself or other people there on the unit. So that's often why people, sometimes people will board for several days in the emergency department, which clearly is not the right place for them, right? It's a, any of us would probably experience a lot of stress if we had to spend several days in the emergency department, and particularly folks with serious mental illness, it's just not the right place for them. So that's, that's why I think we got to do something.
So where should we start to get some more psychiatric health facilities? Should we talk to the state legislature, or the governor, or?
Yeah, there's, they're all, and it's a really complicated issue. You know, certainly, there are restrictions. There's something called the IMD Exclusion Act, Institute for Mental Disease, which really restricts the number of beds at one, you know, in one facility, which is why we're kind of limited to 16. So there's some policy reasons, there's some financial reasons as far as funding. So it's a, it's a really complicated issue, and probably, Maureen is more expert on that than I am, so we can maybe talk online. But yeah, there are some, there are certainly some, some policy positions that we could take to try to.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much.
Jennifer?
Dr. Oldham, thank you. I really appreciate the update. And I particularly appreciate the, your 10 points at the, at the end of it. And looking this over, over the weekend and thinking about the conversation today, eight, nine, and 10, which is relate to substance abuse disorders, mental illness, homelessness, and medical care specifically, are so intimately interwoven with each other. And do we have any idea from a dollar standpoint about what would it take in terms of economic resources to start really adequately addressing these issues? Because they are so interwoven.
Yeah, and we have some models, again, best practices, national best practices and other models of what it takes and other, you know, for other populations. So yeah, we could kind of put that together, and it's a high intensity of resources, but in some ways, compared, if we were able to look at all the other points where we're spending money, including the emergency departments and, you know, jails, et cetera, probably, I think what the literature shows is that those far outweigh kind of the investment in kind of case management, some other supports. So yeah, I can, I'm happy to, again, with working with Maureen and people in our adult system of care, try to put together different estimates. As far as local estimates of what it would look like, we, we have less ability to estimate, but we can estimate based off of, you know, even other counties in California that have done different models.
So your point about the, the sort of general societal costs of not addressing these issues is really valid, but I think it's critically important to recognize that we can't be the only people having that discussion. Those, those costs, for better or for worse, are not entirely borne by the county of Placer. They're borne by cities, they're borne by hospitals, they're borne by fire districts. And so any solution that helps reduce their costs as well as ours needs to be a solution that they're part of. So also love to see increased involvement in policy and planning, as one of your points that you raised. So I'm going to take you up on your offer to sit down and have a one-on-one conversation and just would love to spend a little bit of time brainstorming and figuring out what are the first steps we should be taking. I think supervisor homes, questions about mental health, absolutely critical, and we need to really start taking those steps sooner rather than later. But again, thank you for the report. Very well done, very interesting. And thank you to all your staff, who are really the driving force behind the great work that we do at Placer County.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Is there anyone from the public who'd like to comment or address this issue? See none? Thank you.
Right, thank you very much.
Next item we'll take up is health retail food placard program.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Board. Wesley Nix, Director of Environmental Health Division. We're very pleased to present to you today an enhancement of our food facility inspection program. It's very popular with both the public and the retail food industry. This program will be used at restaurants, markets, school kitchens, and the like to make it very clear that health standards are being maintained in our community, and the overall effect is also shown to reduce foodborne disease outbreaks. Currently, the California Health and Safety Code requires that results of a food facility's last health inspection be made available for the public. The inspection program enhancement we are proposing this morning meets that requirement with a very visible, intuitive, color-coded placard system that will be provided regarding the safety standards during the most recent inspection of that facility, and it can be interpreted at a glance by the public what that means. So here with me this morning to present the details of how we're going to plan and implement this program is Mrs. Peggy Zariolo, Assistant Director of the Environmental Health Division.
Thanks, Wes. Good morning, Chairman. Good morning, supervisors.
Morning.
Okay. I want to make sure I knew how to use it. Thank you very much. We're very pleased to provide you with an opportunity to understand the placarding program. We believe it's going to enhance our food safety program in three ways. We took a look at the different goals that we wanted to achieve with our food program, and we found that a placard that's within five feet of a food entrance, you're going to, the public's going to instantly be able to see that food status. And what's nice about the color-coded placard program, it's very easy to understand, they're universal colors. Red's closed, green's open, they're like the stoplights, yellow's caution, that type of thing. Other jurisdictions has found when they started a placarding program that they had a decrease in foodborne illness throughout the community. We believe we're going to have the same thing also in our community. One of the other goals is it's a visual incentive that can rapidly bring a food facility back into compliance. When we introduced this program several months ago to the restaurants, we found already that there was a collaborative understanding between our inspectors and the food facility to try and bring that up and health and safety improved. The advantages to the program that we found is that it's very popular with the public and with restaurant owners. Based on our data and other jurisdictions' data on the program, we see up to 90% support for both, the placard program for both the public and the regulated community. One of the big things that we find is that with restaurants that are doing a good job, it showcases that they're doing high health and safety standards. On the other side of that, those same restaurant owners that are doing a good job want to highlight one, there's not somebody doing a very good job. We found that as a reason also. The last thing here for advantage is that the health inspection results are easily available to the public. Having that right by the window, that, that customer doesn't have to come in, they instantly see it, and then, right now, the way they have to do it now is to go in and actually ask for the last inspection report. So that eliminates that, that problem to it. So when we really wanted to start moving this forward, thinking this was the way we wanted to improve our food program, Wes went and met with each one of you and, excuse me, met with each one of you and started telling you about the merits of the program and advising you what we were doing and how we were planning to move forward with it. We then created a field inspection guide, fairly simple guide, that for our food inspectors, and then trained them on that food inspection guide, and then also standardized them so they'd understand the food placarding program be introduced to the public. From that point, we moved forward and contacted all the restaurants by mailer. We sent out a large packet on the placard information, what it was, what it meant. At the same time, we also introduced that we were going to be having eight workshops across the county. We had those in Tahoe, Auburn, and in Roseville, and they were specifically, the title of the workshop was how to get a green placard and how to keep it. We really emphasized that. We also emphasize how to avoid getting a red and how to avoid getting a yellow. We took the time in the workshop to go over how to avoid getting a major violation, since that's the major reason that someone would get lack thereof or get a major violation would be the reason why they might get a yellow placard. We felt, after the workshop, we did a good job. We did a small survey and asked the attendees if they felt the workshop was useful. We had a response that 96% of them felt the workshop was effective and useful and helped them out. We also had a survey question where we asked, how do you feel about the placarding program? And again, this is where we found the large response, close to 90%, the green and the yellow showing that the community, the few communities, supported the placarding program. We had two people, 2%, two people that are against it. We ended up having Wesley give those people a call and just found out there was some misunderstanding. They didn't understand how we were going to regulate, introduce the program. We have a typo there. We had 11%, not 15% that had no response to that, to that question. Even though the placarding program is fairly self-explanatory and intuitive, we thought it'd be a good idea to kind of explain a little bit about, show you the placards and also what they mean a little bit. So a green is obviously a pass placard. It's a facility that meets health and safety standards and has no major violations present at the end of the inspection. If a facility has a major violation at the beginning of the inspection and they can fix it by the end of the inspection, they get a green placard. This is what a green placard looks like. The format is very similar with all the other placards. And so you can see up at the top, there's a place where we would be adding the name of the facility, the address. The inspector would be signing it and dating it. And then each one of the placards does have an area that has a website that shows the copy of the most recent inspection reports can be found there. We're currently doing that right now with our food program, but now we're making, again, more available for the public to see that also. At the bottom of the placard, there's an area for previous inspections. So the inspector would go through and find the last date and then indicate what that rating was for that facility. We have our telephone numbers, both at Tahoe and Auburn. And then at the bottom, it also indicates that, yeah, the placard cannot be removed, copied, or altered in any way. The closed is obviously a closure is necessary. This is for imminent health hazards that exist that cannot be mitigated or corrected at the end of the inspection, by the end of the inspection. These are, for some examples, our surfacing sewage in the kitchen, no water, no hot water, no power would mean no refrigeration, no lighting, a rodent infestation or insect infestation in the food pantry, maybe on top of food preparation areas, or other severe unsanitary conditions. This is an example of a red closed placard. Again, it's got everything that the green placard has, but in addition, in the middle, there's a red box that indicates what the violations are that might result in this closure. And our inspector then would check off what the reason is that that closure occurred. I want to take this time to explain that we also believe in what an impact a yellow or a red placard would be on a business. We're very sensitive of that. And as our existing program does now, we would be available to do an inspection after hours or on the weekend to try and get a business back open again. That is very important to us. A yellow placard is the conditional placard. There's two ways you would get a yellow conditional placard. It's if an uncorrected major violation is present at the end of the inspection and also does not pose a major health risk. The other way we would get it, or they would get it, would be a violation of a compliance agreement timeline, and that's for people that have minor violations, that continue to repeat and not correct their violations. So we have reinspection after reinspection and nothing's changing. Our inspector would be able to, at that time, pull out a compliance agreement, fill it out at the same time with the owner in front of us, fill it out, put another timeline down, and if we go out and do a reinspection and that violations are not corrected and the timeline's violated, then that person moves then into a yellow placard. This is an example of a yellow placard. It's got the combinations of both the green and the red information on it, and indicating also the, the yellow part of it. That yellow box is also indicating where we would go through and check off the violations of why that yellow placard was given. So with that, I'm going to turn the presentation back over to Wesley Nix. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
So basically, in summary, this is a program that is very popular with all of the retail food industry and with the public as well. It improves our effectiveness to help reduce foodborne outbreak disease. It adds no additional cost, in that we're just going to simply implement this into the existing inspection program. So while they're there, they do the inspection report. At the very end, they'll issue the appropriate colored placard. the inspection report. At the very end, they'll issue the appropriate colored placard, and we'll be implementing this in sort of a collaborative way, in that we're going to take ownership with our food facility owners, in that we want them all to have a green placard. That means they're in compliance, so that's kind of our mission. If there's any other colored placard, it has to be issued because of issues at the facility. We'll make it a priority to get right back out there and check them, make sure they're back in compliance, reissue a green placard as soon as possible. So the action we're requesting this morning is the board to amend Placer County Code, Chapter 8, Article 8.30, that will allow for the implementation of the placard inspection enhancement program. And I can happily answer any questions you may have.
Jack?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much, Wes, for bringing this forward. I did have a question. Let's say hypothetically that an owner of an establishment disagrees with the designation. How do you resolve that, or how was that handled?
Well, we'd probably show him where it is in the Health and Safety Code, or what code he needs to comply to, and exactly, you know, try to make it as clear as possible to see what it is that causes, say, a conditional placard to be issued rather than a pass health inspections. Then we can enter into what they call a compliance agreement, or come up with some sort of an agreement. If it's not an imminent health threat, but he can fix it pretty soon, we'll probably go ahead and give him a green one, since it's not, you know, immediate public health threat, and he's agreed to work with us to come into compliance.
Are any of these designations reliant on, for example, some type of a test of any type, or is it just strictly the statutory code?
It's mostly just a statutory code. There's what they call, it's defined in the Health and Safety Code, what a major violation is, a minor violation.
So you either have stainless steel, or you don't. Something along those.
Yeah, there's not a lot of ambiguity usually.
Okay, so it's not like we're having a dispute as to whether something caused this, or something caused that.
Correct, yeah, I try to avoid that whenever possible.
All right, thank you.
Jennifer?
Wes, thank you. Two questions. The first is, this applies to restaurants within all the incorporated cities as well, since we have oversight for those.
Yeah, that's correct. It does, yeah, entire county.
The second is, if I'm reading this slide correctly, we're going to assume upon initiation that everyone passes. What is the process for actually going out and doing the inspections, and sort of what timeframe do we think it's going to take to take a look at all of our facilities to make sure they really deserve that green pass?
Good question. We're actually starting it off kind of on a positive note, in that we're going to look through all those past inspection records the last time we were there, and when we issue them their health permit, which will be in May or April, well probably April, May start going out, we'll give them a green placard with their health permit this year, to start them off with a green placard, assuming they're in compliance the last time we were there. Then the inspection, we usually inspect about two times a year, typical inspection frequency, we'll check, make sure they're still in compliance, and evaluate whether to reissue another green placard. So everybody's going to start off, unless we know otherwise, with a green placard.
Okay, so it sounds like within six months to a year, every facility will have been physically inspected to make sure that that green placard is appropriate.
Yes, almost all of them within six months, and within a year, all of them, for sure.
Great, thank you.
So when you go out to do an inspection, do you call the facility and say, "Hey, we're coming in for an inspection"?
Usually, we, yeah, we usually do not let them know ahead of time, but we try to be respectful of, you know, when they're busy, so we'll come by there right at lunch hour, right at dinner, in between. Sometimes if somebody's not there, supervisor, the owner wants to be present, we can come back, you know, we don't have to force the issue. But typically, we don't call ahead. They have a tendency to scrub everything really, you know.
Well, yeah, I've been there, so I know, I know.
Peek up on them.
Thanks.
Is there anyone from the public who'd like to address this item? See none. What's the pleasure of the board?
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the amendment for addition to Article 8.30 of the Placer County Code. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Wes.
Thank you.
Now we'll take up our next department item, Public Works Facilities Common Area Agreement and Equity Exchange with the Judicial Council of California for the Bill Santucci Justice Center. Lori?
Good morning, Chairman, members of the board. Lori Morris, Property Manager, Department of Public Works and Facilities. Today, we're seeking your board's approval of two agreements with the Judicial Council of California. Call them JCC. They're formerly the Administrative Office of the Courts. The first is the Common Area Agreement to govern the operation, management, maintenance, repair, use, and share costs associated with the common area at the Bill Santucci Justice Center campus in Roseville. The common area is required by the Transfer of Responsibility and Deferred Transfer of Title Agreement for the courthouse that was approved by your board in June 10th of 2008. This agreement's necessary due to the Justice Center's parking arrangement, where 447 of the Court's 483 spaces are on county-owned property in the shared lot located north of the courthouse. The county has 124 of the 483 total spaces in this shared lot as well. Its primary purpose is to address the allocation of parking spaces and costs attributable to the campus common area. Initially, each party is responsible for 50% of share costs based on their ratio of total parking spaces. Approximately $216,000 in annual costs are incurred to operate and maintain the campus grounds, roadway, lighting, and parking lot. A component of these costs is an approximately $90,000 annual fee paid to the city of Roseville for bus service. This was a requirement of the city in the major project permit for the campus development, and it was also memorialized in a July 7th, 2004 agreement with the city. Staff had expected that the costs for this would be shared with the JCC. However, upon negotiation of the agreement, we learned that the JCC, from a precedent standpoint, was unable to fund such services. So therefore, 100% of those costs would be absorbed by the county. So based on this, the JCC will pick up approximately $60,000 per year in costs. And also recognizing budgeting constraints with the JCC, which limited its ability to pay back share costs to 2008, at which time the agreement could have, was retroactive to, the JCC agreed to pay almost $130,000 as settlement to pass charges incurred prior to 1516. County's share of the common area costs is available in the Building Maintenance Internal Service Fund and the General Fund Contribution to the Public Safety Appropriation 21700. The second agreement being recommended to your board is the Agreement for Equity Exchange and its accompanying closing documents that transfers to the JCC a 100% equity interest in the arraignment court facility at the Justice Center, and later relinquishes the JCC's entrance in the main Auburn jail up in Auburn. On November 23rd, 2010, your board authorized change order to the South Placer Adult Correctional Facility to include the design and construction of the shell, of the arraignment courtroom shell, in an amount not to exceed $3,760,000. The JCC and county staff are anxious to realize the full potential of the Justice Center through the JCC's completment of the arraignment court build-out, which is estimated at $2.9 million. The project requires the county's contribution of $900,000 towards the build-out, towards holding cells in the arraignment court. When the arraignment court opens, the county will realize significant operational efficiencies and savings by avoiding transportation between the Justice Center and Auburn, where arraignment proceedings now occur. To proceed with this project, the JCC and the county have negotiated this agreement and other accompanying closing documents. The agreement requires the county's release of its equity interest in the arraignment court facility and land, and this would allow the JCC to proceed with their project. And then after the JCC issues a notice to proceed for the construction to its contractor, the county will remit its $900,000 contribution towards the build-out. After completion of the build-out, once the arraignment court transfer has moved from Auburn to the Bill Santucci Justice Center, the JCC will relinquish its interest in the courtroom facilities at the Auburn Main Jail. And the current joint occupancy agreement for that facility that also covers the juvenile hall court facilities will be revised to eliminate reference to the Auburn Main Jail. If by chance the build-out doesn't commence within 180 days after the effective date of this agreement, then the JCC will relinquish its interest in the arraignment court facility and will then retain its interest in the Auburn Main Jail. Funding for the county's contribution to the arraignment court build-out is provided for in the Capitals Projects Fund. Attending today in support of this item is Jake Chatters, Court Executive Officer of the Superior Court of Placer County. In closing, we recommend the board's approval of these agreements, and I welcome any questions you may have.
Thank you. Questions, comments? Jack?
Thank you, Lori, for bringing this item forward. As everybody knows, the county has spent quite a bit of money on a new jail. We're anticipating the opening of this other arraignment court, which is going to, as Lori mentioned, is going to add a significant reduction in the hours and increase the safety of those arraishments, because those arraishments will be taking place right there on site. So that's really important for safety and for efficiency. As with any government agency, it sounds kind of like a weird situation where you have county-owned property that's transferred to the Judicial Council of California, and then, you know, the commits are at agreements for parking and all those kinds of things. The most important thing, I think, to get, to bring, to come away with this particular item is that we're moving in the right direction with fulfilling that obligation and desire to have a fully operating justice center that includes the jail integrated with an arraignment court that's very safe, that's very secure, and that's very sufficient, that at the end of the day is going to save money. The issues with the parking fee or the busing fee and transit fee to the city of Roseville and the transaction to the Judicial Council itself are just procedural items. I'm not really concerned about those. So, good work. Thank you.
Jennifer?
Yeah, thank you as well, Lori, for bringing this forward. I think these are two items that I think we'll all be glad to have resolved. I am going to take the opportunity to advocate for Tahoe and trying to get a facility up there that will meet these same requirements of an arraignment court and sheriff's department facilities that are safe, modern, ADA compliant. I never take the opportunity to not bring that up, so Jake will be talking as well, I'm sure. Thank you.
Is there anyone from the public who'd like to address this item? See none. Please come forward and state your name for the record.
Thank you. Jake Chatters, the Executive Officer for the Placer County Superior Court. Just mostly wanted to say thank you to the board, to the staff at the county, whether it was the county Executive's Office, county council, obviously, facilities. Quite a bit of work it was. Many players involved. It is a testament to how we may have separated and be part of the state judicial branch as a court, but we remain very closely tied to our county partners in the criminal justice system. This could not have happened without people keeping focused on what was right for the community and for our criminal justice community and access to justice in our county. So I just want to say thank you. Yes, our next step will be Tahoe. We need to get this one behind us, and then we can start to work on that a little bit more aggressively. So just wanted to thank you for your consideration today.
Jake, thank you. Just a quick question, Mr. Chairman. You know, because the public probably doesn't really understand what's going on here. If you can compare where we are now to where we would be with the arraignment court, how, you know, from a court administrator's perspective, how does that, how does that look? You know, what benefit does the public get by going in this direction?
So today, historically, we had everyone housed in Auburn. Now with the opening of the South Placer Adult Correctional Facility, the sheriff's department is splitting where they house their defendants or those who've been sentenced for their crimes. What happens now is some of them are being housed in Roseville and have to be transported up to Auburn, and generally speaking, that is the direction that most of it gets transported. What we are able to do with the arraignment courtroom in Roseville is we'll close the function that currently exists connected to the Placer County Jail. That will now exist down in Roseville, which allows us to do a few things. One is, they don't have to be transported. That's a fully secure facility. We're able to move cases in the event that there's a conflict, a challenge. Today, if they're up in Auburn, someone challenges, doesn't want that judge to hear that case, that has to be transported very quickly back down to Roseville. Usually, it means it has to be put over for several days. Being located in the same campus, we can likely address that in the same day. We can do some shuffling of our own, avoid a continuance potentially in some percentage of those cases. So that's a primary one. It'll also assist, I believe, I don't think the DA's office is here, I don't want to speak too much for them, but they currently have to travel up to Auburn. Their main office is obviously in Roseville, in the Santucci Justice Center. This will assist them having most of those cases all in one location. We will still have trials located here at the historic courthouse, so there will be some degree of movement, but most of it then is isolated down in Roseville.
Thanks, Jake.
Thank you. The pleasure of the board. Is there a second? So, motion by Montgomery, second by Holmes. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Motion's carried. Thank you. Quickly take up the sheriff's item, if we can. Mark?
This is a mobile data computer lease agreement with HP.
Correct. Good morning, Chairman Wiegand, members of the board. Mark Jackman, Placer County Sheriff's Office. I'm here before you this morning, seeking your approval for a five-year lease for mobile data computers with Hewlett-Packard. These are replacement MDCs for the current rugged notebooks that we have in the vehicles currently. The cost is $92,000 a year for a five-year lease. Total cost, about $458,000 with a one-year, excuse me, a $1 buyout option at the end. And I'm open to any questions that you might have.
Any questions for my colleagues? See none. Is there anyone from the public who'd like to address this item? I see none. Pleasure of the board. Been moved by Holmes and seconded by Duran. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mark. Now we'll take up our 10 o'clock timed item, Public Works Facilities Public Hearing Regarding Riola Vineyard's Parcel J Annexation. Andrew?
Good morning, Chairman. Wiegand, members of the board. Andrew Darrow, Senior Civil Engineer with Public Works and Facilities. I'm here to request that your board hold a public hearing to consider annexation of parcel number 023221006 into the boundaries of County Service Area 28, Zone 173, Dry Creek. The property is located on PFP Road, west of Willerga Road, near Roseville. HBT of Riola Vineyards LLC is requesting annexation of this 30.36 acre parcel in order to provide sewer service to the proposed 107-lot development. If approved, the applicant will be required to pay the annexation fee in effect at the time they choose to make payment. The current annexation fee is $2,723 per unit, and this calculates to a total annexation fee of $291,361 for this 107-lot development. Staff supports this request. In order to move forward, I request that your board hold a public hearing, and at the end of the hearing, adopt the resolution in the staff report to annex this parcel into the boundaries of County Service Area 28, Zone 173, Dry Creek. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Questions by the board? See none. Okay, this is a public hearing, so I'll open up the item to the public. Anyone wishing to comment, please come forward, state your name. See none. I will close the public hearing and bring it back to the board for action. Motion, Duran, second, Montgomery. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Now we will take up our 10:10 timed item, which is a public hearing regarding Placer Vineyard's Specific Plan, Recreation and Park District Formation. Andy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Members of the board, Andy Fisher, Placer County Parks Division. We have a novel thing in front of you to consider today, something that hasn't been considered in Placer County since 1948. That is the formation of a Recreation and Park District. Specifically, that request is to conduct a public hearing pursuant to Public Resource Code 5780 and following, and to consider the adoption of a resolution of application to the Placer County Local Agency Formation Commission, or LAFCO, to form a new rec- form a new recreation and park district to serve the Placer Vineyard Specific Plan area. I want to take a moment in the beginning to define district because there are a lot of districts associated with Placer Vineyards. There will be a community facility district that will raise special taxes, that's a funding district. Likewise, there will be a county service area zone of benefit, similar to the last item you just heard, that will raise assessments. But this has nothing to do with those. They will take place all on their own. Those are funding mechanisms, those type of districts. But today's decision does not affect those. We're talking about a governance district. This would be a new local agency. It would have its own Board of Directors. Its mission would be to manage parks, trails, and open space at Placer Vineyards. There are two reasons that brought us here today. The first, the Placer Vineyards Ownership Group proposed the formation of a park and rec district, and they provided a plan of service that's attached to your resolution today, a draft plan. Also, we're acting on direction from your board. As you know, in two thousand and fifteen, Placer Vineyards was amended to work in a post-recession economy, but leading up to that amendment, on December tenth, two thousand and thirteen, your board gave staff a number of different policy directives to help us negotiate and finish those amendment documents, and one of those was that the board, quote, "was amenable to the creation of a separate recreation and park district to serve Placer Vineyards." So, that, acting on that, is why we're here today. Before we focus in on a rec and park district, the first decision, taking you, if you will, from being amenable to affirming that you want to move forward with a rec and park district, I want to go through briefly all of the different options. There are three different options that could manage park and rec issues at Placer Vineyards. So, to run those down for you first, the county could do it. Currently, the county develops and maintains parks, trails, landscaping, and open space, but we don't do recreation programming. And until two thousand and seven, we were not allowed to via the general plan discourage the county from doing that. There was an amendment in two thousand and seven that allowed the county to get into recreation programming in the case of a specific plan that called for such. So, the county could do that. The finance plan that we have worked on for several years with Placer Vineyards would allow either county or district performance of all the duties that we'll talk about here under this park and rec district. So, funding should be available in either case. The scale of the facilities at Placer Vineyards is large, and to give you an idea, the inventory of park, rec, open space, and so forth trails at Placer Vineyards, if the county were to perform it, would add over fifty percent to our current inventory countywide for the entire county, and that's just for the single Placer Vineyards neighborhood. So, that would be county performance. Next is the recommendation, which would be a rec and park district. That's the recommendation before you. A rec and park district, a new local agency, is given all the authority specifically to manage things like parks, trails, open space, landscape facilities, and the recreation programming that goes with it. Rec and park district is given the power to regulate use, to carry debt, buy and sell property, pass its own budget, raise its own revenue through fees and rents, and it would also be able to receive the transfer of funding from the county through the fee programs and special taxes and assessments that will be provided through the Placer Vineyards Development Agreement. The third option, to just fill out your plate completely, would be a community service district, and that has similar powers to a rec and park district, but it's able to take on more areas of responsibility. For example, it could provide sewer, water, fire protection, and so forth. North Star CSD, serving the North Star community, is exactly that kind of model. They provide recreation as well as sewer, water, and fire. So, we're not aware of any other service needs in the Placer Vineyards area that aren't covered elsewhere, so that's not being recommended for you today, but we wanted you to have a full plate of the three legal options that could take care of rec and park issues at Placer Vineyards. And then, if you decide to proceed with an application to LAFCO to form a rec and park district, there are a number of required pieces of information that must be included in the application package. You don't have to make findings on these individually. They are within the resolution and the plan for services before you, but I want to run through a summary of each of those required pieces of information as we wrap up, in case you want to make any changes and so that you can affirm those. The first thing is the type, level, range, timing, and financing of service. So, what's just the broad description of what you expect to happen out there, when and how to fund it. So, the Placer Vineyard Specific Plan envisions over a twenty-to-thirty-year build out, one-hundred-and-fifty-nine acres of parks, thirty-five miles of trail, six-hundred-and-ninety-three acres of open space that will have habitat and drainage facilities and trails within it, eighty-one acres of landscape corridors along the arterial roadways, a thirty-one-thousand-square-foot recreation center, and then develop jointly with the school district, an aquatic center, and a gymnasium, and then with that comes an urban level of recreation programming that's funded and envisioned. That would be your yoga classes, swim lessons, and things like that. The district board would have authority to approve final development plans, so that mix would have some flexibility by the board. They would decide what level and range of programming to offer, and they would set maintenance service levels over all that. The timing of all that would happen over the build out. There's fourteen thousand units, a little over fourteen thousand residential units proposed for Placer Vineyards, and as funding comes in from lot creation and from building permits, those facilities would come online. It's expected that the more urban-level services, the rec center, the programming, and so forth, would not happen until after the six-thousandth building permit, and the absorption models in your plan of services show that happening after about two thousand and thirty-one. And funding, as we've touched on already, for development, at the time of residential building permits, each residence will pay a fee. In total, all of those facilities, just for development, would total about seventy-five million in two thousand and sixteen dollars. And then, for ongoing, there will be a special tax and an assessment that will be formed. That's already included in the development agreement, that would be based on occupancy for residential units and floor area for commercial units. Those revenue sources would generate on an ongoing basis about five million dollars annually. The next piece of information that needs to be affirmed is the name of the district, and that name proposed before you is the Placer Vineyards Park and Recreation District. The next element is the method of setting an initial board, and I want to spend a moment on this because I think it'll have some direct impact on you and your duties as a board. There are two different ways to set up an initial board. The first is appointed. The second is elected, and the proposal before you is that the initial board would be appointed, and specifically, that the Board of Supervisors would appoint itself as the initial district Board of Directors, and there is a good legal reason for that. In any case of an elected board or any appointed board other than the Board of Supervisors appointing themselves, legally, it must consist of residents living within the district boundary. So, you'll see that there is some guidance within the plan of services that calls for an election to convert from an appointed board to an elected board, and what it says in there is that it should happen before the six-thousandth building permit. And that was just a number that reflected when we thought the urban-level services were coming online, but it could happen much sooner than that. That's no legal requirement. That was just some guidance. The next element is whether the district would have the power of eminent domain. The recommendation is no. We do expect that all of the property and easements that the district would need to accumulate and have within their inventory already have a mechanism of conveyance through the existing development agreement, so we don't think that eminent domain would be necessary. The next element is a description of the boundaries. Exhibit A within your package shows the boundary, which is all of the development area of Placer Vineyard's Specific Plan, not including what we call the specific, the special planning area, or SPA, which is the existing neighborhood to the far west end of Placer Vineyards. That portion would not be included, but the rest of the Placer Vineyard Specific Plan area would be, and again, all of the APNs included in the map is attached as exhibit A. And then, finally, you need to give a reason for the formation, and I'm gonna just simply read the two that are given in your packet. One, the district will facilitate the provision of recreational development services and opportunities for the citizens residing in this geographic area, not currently being served by such facilities. And two, formation of the district will provide the citizens of this area with the opportunity to determine the specific recreational services they would prefer and develop, and institute priorities appropriate for this area. So, as I close and I turn it back to your board for questions, I just wanted to mention that we have some other folks here in the audience who may be of service. We have Michelle Kingsbury from Cedra, who's worked extensively on Placer Vineyards, Christina Berry, our LAFCO Executive Director, and then from the Placer Vineyards team, we have owners' representatives, we have representatives from the finance team, and from their legal team, and with that, I will turn it back to you.
Thanks, Andy. Great presentation. Are there any questions or comments by board members at this time? Kirk?
Yeah, just a comment, and that is, I like that you point out that our board hasn't considered an action like this since, I think, Robert first started back in eighteen ninety.
You're on a roll today.
This is, as the county looks to our, kind of our manifest destiny and our expansion to the west and the university projects, and as we consider some of these larger projects, the creation of these kinds of districts, the ability for us as a board to look to hand off service delivery to a future locally-elected board from amongst the residents that will... This is exactly the kinds of things that when, I think, we as a board sat with all of our staff several years ago and said, "We need to look at a new way of doing business." This is exactly what I had in mind, and so I just wanted to thank you for the work that your department has put in. I know Cedra has put in a number of hours, especially on the finance component side of this, and being here at this place where we are hopefully about to move forward with the staff recommendation, I think is a very exciting milestone in showing that we as a county can move these kinds of projects forward. So, just an observation. Thank you.
Jack?
Yeah, I'm thinking along the same lines as Supervisor Euler. This has been a very interesting, at sometimes challenging, process to get it to this point, and I think if you take a look at what we're doing here and where this project is in the process, the prior project, Rio La Vineyards, that we just took action on just a moment ago, and then if you recall the different things that we can look forward in the county from our Tahoe meeting two weeks ago, that says a lot about where we are now, where we've been in the past, and where we're headed in the future. And I think, you know, what you'll find is that we're in a very good place. We're placed very well. You know, we're one of the highest per capita incomes in the state of California, and we've got a lot of bright people and a lot of bright things and a lot of bright opportunity in this county, and I think we all, not only just the county folks, but our partners in the cities have a lot to look forward to, and I'm very proud to be sitting here as these things are moving forward. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, this is a public hearing, so at this time, I'll open up the issue to the public for comments or questions. Tim?
Thank you, Chairman Wygant, members of the board, Tim Taran, representing the Placer Vineyards Development Group. We have our whole team here. We have Kent McDermott, who's our project manager. We have Al Johnson and Mike Schelto, who are our parks consultants in this. Al's also doing some financial consulting. And we have Chris Austin and Matt Johnson, who are from DPFG, who are a financial consulting firm, that helped put the plan of services together. So, we brought a lot of resources to bear on this, and I wanted to make sure you knew they were here. I also wanted to thank the staff because, Andy, that was a fantastic staff report. I mean, that was really great, not much to add to that, and all the help that your staff has given to get us to this point. We are very excited, and we're excited for all the reasons that you just mentioned because we're talking about governance here for something that's really, really important to these future residents, which is their recreation and parks component of their lives, and we think we're putting the structure in place. You're putting the structure in place to make this happen. So, we obviously ask you to adopt this resolution. Happy to answer any questions you have, and that's it. Thank you.
Could, for the folks filtering in for the next item, could keep in mind that we're having a public hearing, and if you could keep your voices down for the moment, please, appreciate that. Any questions of Tim or anyone on the team by the board? See none. Is there anyone else from the public who'd like to approach the board on this issue? See none. I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the board for any further questions or comments or action.
Second?
Moved by Duran and seconded by Montgomery. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. So, now, is it close enough to ten-thirty, Joe? You don't think it's gonna take? Okay, now, we're gonna skip back to our next department item, which is an open container ordinance. Joel?
Got quite the audience.
You're a popular guy, Joel.
Did you tell my parents that? Good morning, Chairman...
They heard you brought some open containers, I think.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the board. My name's Joel Joyce with the County Executive Office, and I'm joined here by Brett Holt. Today, I'm asking your board to introduce a final ordinance in our Quality of Life series. As you are aware, staff brought forward three previous ordinances that your board has since adopted. The ordinance before you today would repeal Placer County Code Article nine-point-zero-eight and replace it with new Article nine-point-zero-eight and waive the oral reading. As an additional means, as an additional tool for law enforcement, this ordinance would prohibit possession of an open container of alcohol in streets, alleys, sidewalks, public right-of-way, or in any parking garage, lot, facility, building, as well as any public place or public facility owned by Placer County. An exception to this activity would, an exception to this would be any activity that is licensed or permitted through our typical county process, and a violation of this ordinance would be considered an infraction. The state of California has a unique law on the books that prohibits open containers in public places, but similar to states that have no law, the state law only applies in jurisdictions to those which have an ordinance on the books, thus allowing, thus not allowing our law enforcement officers to cite individuals for violations of state law. With that, I have, I can answer any questions?
Questions? I see none, Joel. Is there anyone from the public who'd like to address this item? All these people and not one comment?
So, Joel, I just want to say thank you for bringing this forward and particularly for working through some of the issues relating to events like wine walks, our alcohol ban, our seasonal alcohol ban on Truckee River and some of the beaches up there, to make sure that this all worked well together, because we didn't want unintended outcomes on this, and I think it's critically important to note that because we didn't have an ordinance on the books, our law enforcement could not cite on this. So, really important that we get this on the books so that they have all the tools that they need to do their jobs. So, thank you to both of you.
And we did have some enthusiasm by the crowd for those comments.
What's in her bottle?
Okay, I see no further questions. Lights or any, what's the pleasure of the board? Moved by Montgomery, seconded by Holmes, I think. Not Duran? We'll pick Duran. He was quicker. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Now, we will go to our ten-thirty timed item, which is human resources, and it is a recognition of one-thousand-four-hundred-and-fifteen years of service by our county employees. Lori?
Thank you. Good morning. If we could just take a minute to have everyone who is a service award recipient come on in the room. There are some additional chairs up front, so if you're not in the room, we'd love to make sure that you're a part of this ceremony. Come on forward, if you would. We've got chairs down in front. Nobody wants to sit in front. Thank you, board members, CEO Bosch, Council Carden for this opportunity. This is my privilege and pleasure to introduce the item on your agenda as we recognize employees for their years of service to the county. And while we dedicate this morning's presentation to employees whose careers have spanned over twenty-five years, it should be noted that a ceremony was held last Wednesday at the Planning Commission Hearing Room to honor those employees who had earned service awards for their twenty years of service. Board Chair Wygant and CEO Bosch presented awards to those employees and celebrated with their families, friends, and coworkers in the ceremony there. But today's award presentations will be made to employees that have served the county for twenty-five... for 25, 30, and 35 years of service. In addition, we'll be recognizing department heads and board members who have achieved Service Award milestones. As each recipient is called to receive their award, please note the PowerPoint presentation, including those brave souls that provided now-and-then photos when the call went out to find photos from a date when they were hired to the present day. And speaking of photos, we have a beautiful day for photos, a group photo to be taken outside at the end of the ceremony, so please, all the award recipients, please stay for a photo, a group photo shot. There's opportunities for photos with family, friends, and coworkers as well. The award recipients that we honor today were hired into county service between 1980 and 1990. And to gain some perspective on the length of time that that represents, here are some benchmark occasions that occurred during that time period. The Berlin Wall came down. John Lennon was assassinated. There was an assassination attempt on President Reagan. The movie E.T. was released. Michael Jackson released his album, Thriller. The Vietnam War Memorial opened in Washington, D.C. Cabbage Patch Kids were popular. Sally Ride became the first American woman in space. The charity single, "We Are the World," was recorded. Space Shuttle Challenger exploded, and in 1989, the World Wide Web was created. Those ensuing years to the present day are the years that each of the employees we honor today dedicated to their public sector career. And as Supervisor Montgomery stated this morning, these employees represent the driving force for assuring excellent public service to your constituents and to our community. And so I would ask CEO Bosch and Chair Weigant to come down to the podium and to start the delivery of those award presentations. And thank you, Lori Woods, for operating the PowerPoint. And so Amy will hand you those. How are we going to do this?
This will be a little challenging, but I think we'll get through it just fine. We're going to start off with some of our elected officials and department heads, and so we did this not in alphabetical order by name, but instead by department. So, leading us off this morning, celebrating 25 years of service is Jerry Gammas. Jerry's followed by Josh Hunsinger. Josh is celebrating 15 years. I haven't seen him here. Tom Kristoff, our APCD Director, celebrated 20 years, but Tom recently retired, so I'm sure he's enjoying himself somewhere. Next, we're going to recognize Supervisor Jim Holmes for his 10 years of service.
Hey, thanks a lot, old timer.
Well, next we're going to celebrate and recognize Board Chair Robert Weigant for his 20 years of service. Robert is followed by Michael Johnson, our SEDRA Director, 10 years of service. Next, Ronald, also known as Scott Owens, our District Attorney, celebrating his 25 years.
If Scott's not here, can I just quickly? We're celebrating 25 years of Scott with the District Attorney's Office, but he was eight years with probation prior to that, so he's actually got 33 years of service. And I just thought I'd throw that out for the record.
Maybe we ought to recognize that in like two years.
Exactly.
I like that idea. Thank you, Supervisor. Next, sitting to my left, Lori Walsh, 15 years of service. Next, we have Chris Berry, our LAFCO Executive Director, celebrating 10 years. And then I think there was a typo on the list here, because one of the people who, kind of a quasi-department head that I want to particularly recognize at this moment, is Holly Heinsohn for her 30 years of service to Placer County. I think Holly had a hand in this, because as many of you know, she helps orchestrate our agenda, so I think she was being a little sneaky. All right, on to 25 years of service. First up, from Administrative Services, Shirley Bada. Next, from the Assessors Department, Christopher Bullis. Is Christopher here? Next, also from the Assessors Department, Terry King. Finally, from the Assessors Department, Linda Russell. Moving on to our SEDRA, Community Development Resource Agency, first up we have Richard Richard is followed by George Rososco. All right, next from the CEO's office, Allison Carlos. Is she here? Allison retired a few months ago. Also from the CEO, Terry Evaldi. From the County Clerk Recorder's Office, Robin January Torres. Next, from the District Attorney's Office, Linda Ludwig. Also from the DA's Office, Patricia Matthews. On to the Department of Public Works, Don Anderson. Also from Public Works, we have Vivian Clark. Followed by Lee Holgate. Next, we have Andrew Zmloski. Almost got that, I think. All right, followed by Facility Services, Michael Barrett. Next, we have Valerie Bain. Turning over. Valerie's followed by Jeffrey Byrum. Next, we have Richard Johnson. Also known as Rick. Rick is followed by John Ramirez. He's looking younger than the last time we saw him. John recently retired. Congratulations, John. Happy retirement. Next, we have Robin Sek. On to Health and Human Services, Maureen Baumann. Next, we have Linda Dickerson. From probation, we have William Parcher. Also from probation, Catherine Sutherland. From the Sheriff's Office, Christine Sawyer. Also from the Sheriff, Andrew Scott. Now, moving on to 30 years of service. Our first recipient from Administrative Services is Mary Woods. Next, Lisa Harris, County Clerk Recorder. She's retired, too. Next, from the DA's Office, Timothy Sands. From Public Works, Leslie Potter. Or Les Potter.
David, I just wanted, Leslie, Les Potter called me and was regretful that he couldn't be here, because he's celebrating his 30th wedding anniversary with his wife.
Sounds like a priority to me. Thanks, Supervisor. Next, we have Daniel Turney. From Health and Human Services, Toby Bailey. From the Sheriff's Office, Sally Ann Lobb. Also from the Sheriff's Office, Richard Schnorr. Now, it just never ceases to amaze me. 35 years of service to Placer County. This is a milestone that not many of us can achieve in our lifetimes or careers, but it's my privilege and pleasure to introduce to you Justin Dodd from Administrative Services. Needing glasses. Next, from DPW, we have Gary Sutton. And our final award recipient this morning is Debbie Longhoffer, HHS.
Thank you both for the time and the presentation this morning. Please join us in a reception that will be held out in the hallway and in Conference Room A, and then, of course, a group photo for everyone out in that beautiful area out front. And thank you all.
Thank you very much, Lori. So now a closed session, I guess, right? Yeah. I can stumble that over the microphone so we can get it out there, right? The board is now going to adjourn into closed session.
Oh, I think we can do both. Pretty cool. The board will now adjourn to closed session to discuss the items listed on the agenda on page four. There'll be a conference with legal counsel to discuss one matter of existing litigation and a conference with labor negotiators to discuss DSA negotiations.
Okay, the board has returned from closed session, and County Council will report out.
The board met in closed session to discuss a litigation case, Bjork versus County of Placer, with legal counsel. The board heard the report and gave direction to counsel. The board also had a conference with its labor negotiators, heard a report from its labor negotiations team, and gave direction to that team. That concludes the closed session report.
Thank you, Jerry. We'll now take up our 11:30 timed item, which is a report from Health and Human Services regarding, we're going to receive a report on the homeless issue, and then we're going to be providing staff with their seeking direction regarding procurement process for potential acquisition of a homeless site, and then we're going to be, we are requested to consider the request for proposal for the operation of the facility. So, Jeff, turn it over to you.
Good morning, Chair Weigant, members of the board. Jeff Brown, your Health and Human Services Director. I'm joined this morning with Tammy Moss Chandler, our -- I'm joined this morning with Tammy Moss Chandler, our Department's Assistant Director, and also Susan Farrington, President of the Homeless Resource Council of the Sierras. So, per your direction, at the October 6th Board Meeting, we are returning to you today to provide you with an update of the work groups convened to address the recommendations provided by our homeless consultant, Dr. Robert Marbut, regarding particularly improvements to our homeless continuum of care. Similarly, we will share with you this morning updated information regarding a search for a long-term shelter site in Auburn, as well as an update to the operations of the temporary shelter in Auburn. And then, finally, we seek your direction in regards to issuing an RFP to identify an operator for the next year for the temporary Auburn homeless shelter and to the potential acquisition of a site for a permanent Auburn shelter. So Tammy and Susan will now provide you with more detail regarding our regional homeless continuum of care and the Marbut planning groups.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Good morning.
Good morning.
Chairman Wiegand, members of the Board. The Departments worked with our local continuum of care, which is the Homeless Resource Council of the Sierras. You may recall from the report from Dr. Marbut last spring that he recommended, as we move forward to address this significant issue of chronic homelessness in Placer County, that the county partner with our local continuum of care. So the Departments partnered with Homeless Resource Council of the Sierras to facilitate four different work groups that have actively been meeting since the summertime. I wanted to thank the Board of the Homeless Resource Council of the Sierras for joining with the county to facilitate these groups and partner with us in this effort to look at more detailed implementation plans as a follow-up of Dr. Marbut's report. I also wanted to take this opportunity to thank our public safety partners, who partnered with us throughout these work groups as we've been meeting, both the police departments in our city jurisdictions that have been coming to the meetings, as well as our local Sheriff's Department. And I particularly want to also thank the Facility Services Department and their staff team that's helped Susan and I have the expertise and information we needed to move forward in looking at the aspects of finding a shelter site in Placer County. And I also wanted to thank, in addition to Ken Graham and Facility Services, Michael Johnson and his team in SEDRA, and particularly Senior Planner Chris Schmidt, who's helped us facilitate our Housing Solutions Meeting, as well as provide really important information from the planning perspective around looking for an Auburn shelter. And with that, I just wanted to thank especially Susan for taking this time to facilitate these meetings. We're going to have her give you the updates on some of the details of the work groups that she's facilitated over the last six months, and talk a little bit more about the continuum of care in Placer County and the opportunities that the continuum provides the county.
The continuum of care adopted its first strategic plan to cover the years 2015 through 2017 in October of 2015. And our primary goals were to increase progress towards ending chronic homelessness, to end veterans homelessness as soon as possible, which we hope to accomplish hopefully by the end of this year with the addition of some more HUD-VAS vouchers and the collaboration between the Homeless Resource Council of the Sierras and the Veterans Administration with the Auburn Medical Facility. Prevent and end homelessness for families, youth, and children by 2020. And we do believe that that's attainable now with the additional cooperation with the Health Department around the CalFresh program and putting people in housing with the Advocates for the Mentally Ill Housing Group. We're hoping to reduce the number of homelessness in general, but these are daunting tasks, and we plan to work with the entire community as a whole in reaching these goals. One of the best ways we can do that is to come up with a coordinated entry and services, intake services approach. And I'm happy to tell you that we've been able to secure funding to launch a pilot of this coordinated entry process in Nevada County within the next two months. We'll be using their 211 system. There will be no wrong door. All of the different providers within the system will be available to direct all people seeking services to the 211 system, and we'll finally be able to start tracking all people asking for services and making sure that they're directed in the right way to the available services in the community. We're also going to be tracking that through the Homeless Management Information System, which is one of the four work groups that we formed at your direction. Funding for this process comes partially from the Housing and Urban Development at the federal level, along with funding from each of the counties and the City of Roseville. We bring a little less than $1 million into Placer County every year, and that's provided to the nonprofits, then the Reason, as well as the Adult System of Care. We are facing a drastic cut in the amount of emergency solutions funds that we'll be able to bring into the district for the next year, and that is a major concern. We were bringing in about $800,000, and because of a restructuring of the system done by the state Housing and Community Development Department, we now will only be allocated about $184,000 a year. So drastic cuts. We don't know how that's all going to look yet, but we definitely, we're going to need to find some creative solutions to deal with that. The Homeless Management Information System Work Group has been meeting on a quarterly basis since 2012. We have five providers presently cooperating in this system, the Advocates for the Mentally Ill Housing, Adult System of Care, Roseville Home Start, The Gathering Inn, and the Volunteers of America have been working on paper copies of the HMIS intake, and they're just right now being trained to start entering information into our HMIS system. The HMIS coordinated group is done by the Salvation Army of Grass Valley. We use Boden Industries, a industry standard across the country. And we're working on adding new providers as soon as possible. Our data collection and quality have been increased to above 99% consistently, which make us ready now to expand the system. Some of the barriers to that are, of course, the cost of initiating this, but we hope that by starting our pilot project with the coordinated entry and really starting to look at some of the data real-time in HMIS, that we'll be able to encourage other providers to come onboard and participate in the process. The Housing Solution Work Group was one, probably had the most daunting task of any of these groups. There was a steep learning curve. We had to develop an understanding of the housing needs and gaps in services and understand exactly how this all fits together. And again, as Tammy said, we have to thank the facilities and the planning people that really helped us get up to speed and understand all of the different challenges in building affordable housing in Placer County. And we did come up with a few recommendations to you for your consideration. One of the things that we wanted to ask you, and this is the consensus from the group, is that you prioritize the use of underutilized public land for affordable and special need housing. And we would like to ask you to perhaps consider honoring the decision of this Board in 2001 to build affordable housing by DeWitt. At the time, it was called Bell Gardens. I think it was about 64 units. The Board backed them, committed to actually building on that site. I do have the actual Board action. If, I'll leave it with Melinda for you guys to take a look at. We also wanted to ask you to publicly acquire existing multifamily properties that are in affordable neighborhoods but are at risk of redevelopment or converting to market rate. It's somewhat counterintuitive, but as the economy and the housing markets improve, now Placer County actually has the largest increase in property tax in the state. But at the same time, the rental vacancy rate is below 2%. And with that being said, it means the housing opportunities for low-income individuals and especially the homeless have diminished to the point of really being beyond challenging at this point. So we don't want any of our available low-cost units redeveloped into something that's more of market value that'd only exacerbate the existing lack of affordable housing in the community. We'd like you to look at exploring funding options to expand rental and operating subsidies for extremely low-income tenants. Our traditional federal funding sources, the housing chores vouchers or Section 8, are extremely limited, the waiting lists are very long, and they're simply not meeting the need in the community. We'd like you to consider bolstering the Housing Trust Fund, so affordable housing mitigation fees would be collected maybe on all new housing and commercial development, if that is what you would choose to do. We'd also like to ask the county to meet its regional housing need allocation to get units built in specific planned projects rather than allow them to pay in lieu fees. We'd really like to see that 10% of affordable housing actually end up as brick-to-mortar development. And if that's not possible, at least ask those plans to work with the county to set aside some land so that perhaps other developers could provide some affordable housing on those pieces of property. A specific plan to pay in lieu fees, perhaps the county should work with the developer to, you know, obtain sites that would be able to be developed. The county could consider waiving 100% of the application process fees in new affordable housing developments with long-term affordable housing covenants. We'd also like to see the county maybe ease some of the development standards to allow maybe more density and bonuses around constructing more studio and one-bedroom apartments, which we really lack in the county at this point. And maybe even consider the possibility of planning tiny houses as an opportunity for the very low-income to have some level of stability. As you can tell, this group did a lot of thought, put a lot of thought into these requests or suggestions to you, and we know that what we're asking for is a lot, and we are talking about long-term planning. But we became very aware that any movement now is still not going to come to fruition for five to 10 years. So we did feel it's important to make some substantive action at this point. The South Placer Work Group developed and shared a lot of information around the existing services. This work group was not able to come to consensus on the need for a 24/7 come-as-you ARE shelter. However, they still leave that option open, but it's pretty clear at this point that none of the cities that were involved in these discussions, although we did have excellent cooperation and collaboration with the cities and their various staff, they were not open to even considering a 24/7 come-as-you ARE shelter within their jurisdictions. So our basic belief was that if there is going to be such a facility built in South Placer, it's likely going to have to be on county land. And there are some available properties. There's one in the Sunset Industrial Ridge area. But again, we'd probably have to start with some sort of feasibility study to see if that was even a viable site. The Auburn Area Work Group, on the other hand, first meeting came to consensus. Yes, we need a 24/7 come-as-you ARE shelter with support services. And we started asking immediately, what's it going to look like? Are there other sites available than DeWitt? Because we also came to consensus that DeWitt probably isn't the best place to have the permanent shelter. So we asked the county to give us some expert advice, and the county was wonderful in doing that. Hired a commercial realtor to go around the county to some of the sites that we had looked at and determined whether they were available and whether the footprint of a shelter that could house between 60 and 100 people would actually be viable on any of these properties. And we've brought that information back to you, and at this point, we're just waiting to see what next steps you want us to take as far as regarding whether we need to move forward in negotiations around those sites or just what you would like us to be doing. And then, again, there's work being done in coordination with the CCTT in Tahoe, and we'd like to see that work continue. One thing I'd like to say about all of these groups is every one of them is dedicating to continuing the hard work that you've asked us to do. There's a real sense of trust and collaboration. We know this work is daunting, but everybody wants to continue working towards a solution.
Thank you, Susan. So with that, I wanted to provide the opportunity for the Board to just hear a little bit about the current shelter operations on the Placer County Government Center. And given the fact that it will take considerable time to take the next steps around potentially procuring and rezoning and completing the next steps around looking for long-term shelter and service center solutions. The current shelter on the county center is providing a vital service and is addressing the chronic homelessness concerns in our county right now. Just as a reminder, the shelter opened in June 2015 and initially served as an overnight facility for 47 people. In November, the shelter actually expanded so that people could stay beyond just getting their basic needs of shelter and food and safety overnight to be able to be open during the day. And the program incorporated case management services for 47 slots that now have the opportunity to have case management and wraparound services and work plan development for that part of the facility. And then, in the last week of November, the facility expanded and has a section of the facility that's overflow during these winter months, especially during this being the wettest and coldest winter in the last few years. It allowed for overflow shelter for up to 50 additional people. Right now, the shelter is actually serving, on average, over the last month, about 33 people on average in the overflow section of the shelter and fully utilizing case management for 47 people. On the very wettest and coldest nights, they've actually gotten to their full occupancy. They haven't exceeded their occupancy in the overflow shelter yet this winter, but they have a coordination and collaboration with The Gathering Inn to facilitate if there ever is a need to go over their occupancy total of 100. So far, the shelter's served over 300 unique individuals since it opened. We've provided some statistics about the demographics for men and women served there. We actually had a site visit from Dr. Marbut two weeks ago, and it complimented how well-run and clean the facility is and what tremendous success they've had in finding housing and employment and other needed services in the short time that they've been open. So with that, I'll turn it back to your Board for any questions you have of staff regarding the request today for direction, both around our long-term planning as well as the next steps for services on the Placer County DeWitt Center.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the Board at this time? Jennifer?
I have just a couple general comments regarding the direction. I'm really very impressed by the work that all the different planning groups have done to identify needs and unmet needs. I think that it's really important that we continue to focus on all areas of the county and not just the Auburn and North Auburn area. The work that we've done in far eastern Placer County is great, but we need to build on that. So we need to put some bandwidth to that. And we were very fortunate in that we were able to partner with the Town of Cherokee and the County of Nevada to come up with some solutions that we just frankly hadn't seen before in the eastern end of either Placer or Nevada County. But it's still insufficient to the needs. I think we all know that, and so we need some bandwidth for that. I think the same really kind of goes for South Placer. I did attend a couple of the South Placer meetings, and there were definitely some skeptics largely from the city as to whether a facility was necessary or not. So I think, I think your identification as maybe some county lands as being appropriate, something in the unincorporated area. The Santucci Center has been suggested, that area, as well as the SIA. I think we have the bandwidth to be looking at that as well. So I, really what I'm just trying to communicate is I think we should be focusing on more than just this question of Auburn and North Auburn and really looking at this more globally in terms of getting to Dr. Marbut's recommendations about the different populations that we do have in Placer County. So that's all I have for the moment.
Jim?
Thank you, Susan, for your leadership on this issue. You mentioned that the Roseville group was kind of uncertain about whether they wanted to, and so they're going out to study what's going on now, what kind of services are provided. And so how long do you think that, do you have any idea how long that's going to take for them to?
Well, they've asked for another meeting in about a month.
Oh, okay.
They're trying to conduct a needs assessment at this point, and they're looking at different mechanisms to use. They'll make a decision within the month as to what mechanisms they're going to use in conducting their needs assessment and collaborating with the Homeless Resource Council of the Sierras to really get the baseline that they feel that they need to make any informed choices.
Good. So I have to agree with Supervisor Montgomery. I think that we have to look at this as a regional issue and not just focus on North Auburn. If Roseville and Rockland don't want a homeless shelter in their cities, I wouldn't be agreeable to allowing one outside of their border because that's not going to help them at all because people from Roseville are going to be gone outside of their boundaries. Anyhow, that's all I have right now, and again, I want to thank you for your leadership.
You're welcome. I just want to point out, all of the Santucci Justice Center is in the city of Roseville, correct? Just something to keep in mind as we go forward. Okay, so I think now, I'm sorry, Jack.
I think the site that they're talking about is in county land.
Right.
Across and adjacent from Santucci.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure we got that. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure we got that up before comments started coming in.
And I would agree, a global approach is best, and that's basically what I think we're doing. I don't think that this is, I think it's North Auburn centric right now, because, you know, we were advised of an issue here, and we were addressing that issue. So I think the global, the broader perspective is what do we do as a county? You know, how do we address this? And is there more than one way to address it in one community versus another? So there's a lot of strategies here, but putting your head in the sand and saying it doesn't exist is not a strategy. Sorry.
Any other questions, comments? All right, going to open this up for any and all public comment. Obviously, there are a lot of folks here, so we might get a few of those, but I would like you to keep your comments to three minutes if you can. And the board, whereas we want to receive all relevant information, if somebody says something that you are going to say you don't need to repeat that, you might just refer back to that so that we actually get to leave here sometime today. Thank you. State your name for the record, please.
Leo McFarlane, Volunteers of America, Auburn resident. Here we go, thank you. I'm going to give you, we're going to go through several slides here. Some of it is repetitive information from Tammy's report, so I will be very quick. The background of the shelter Tammy spoke about, but what I do want to speak to is the fact that between the authorization to use the Barrick Shelter and the opening in June of 2015, right-hand Auburn folks invested about $180,000 to $185,000 into ADA repairs as well as sprinkling, so there was a significant cash investment. Faces of the shelter, the folks that we saw in the last eight months, 305 different guests, some stayed for a day and some have stayed longer. But what's very unique about this statistic for me is that the 112 of the 305 were women. This is an unusual percentage in the homeless continuum. So this begs us to sort of really drill down on the lack of services for women in the community and make sure we invest appropriately in solutions for homeless women. Included in that number are 27 veterans that have made their way to our door. Significant spike as of November, December, and January when we opened the overflow shelter and saw a lot of folks abandoning the campsites during these horrible weather conditions and coming to our doors. Veterans are more likely not to seek shelter generally, but these conditions have really driven that differentiation. Our ages of the guests, you know, if you look at it, less than 10% are less than 25 years of age, so we're dealing with a moderately older population. The ethnicity is pretty clear. The number, the entry point for the shelter is of the 305, 291 were self-walk-up admits. Four of the guests came from service referrals, four from the sheriff's department, three from Auburn Police Department, and then three referrals from Sutter Hospital. Here's a big note to talk about. The mental health and substance abuse makeup that 305 individuals. As you can see, 16% reported, this is all self-reporting information, but also information that we gather through intensive interview process where we might learn that they might not be admitting to a mental health issue, but when we talk about medication issues and what sort of medication they're taking, we can sort of then determine that mental illness may be in effect. But as you can see, it's a 23% admit to a drinking problem, 58 guests identify solely as a mental health issue, and combined, 42% of both mental health and substance abuse issues. So you can see the big hurdle that we're faced with here, given the nature of the barriers that this population, sorry. As reported earlier, 35 people have been placed since June 1st. Some have been in drug patient rehabilitation. 10 are pending housing, they've been, they're being approved for housing vouchers, four are waiting move-in dates, and one is waiting transfer to board and care. Again, since the eight months, 24 have found employment. Now that might be someone living in the shelter, working at a local retail business, and also of those four that are in college, they would have been, were living in the shelter, working in a retail establishment, and going back to college all at the same time. So right now, I believe right now the data would probably show there's about eight people in the shelter today that are also working and living at the shelter. When we implemented case management in December, we've developed over 100 case plans. These are all the sort of categories that we're working with each individual on, hooking them up with various services. In-house substance abuse meetings, we've got AA meetings, NA meetings going on, women's, specific women's meetings on those issues, and outside meetings. You can see the attendance rate is very, very good. We started those as of November, December, and January. So we've got a real interest, a voluntary interest on folks participating in those meetings, and sobriety is a major factor in moving folks along into housing. So we have a ton of partners in this effort community-wide. We've got the Right-Hand Auburn Board, we have physicians and nurses that are assisting us, the animal, the Placer Animal Shelter is being very much engaged with shots and providing food, sorry about my time here. Meals are provided by a variety of organizations out there, including St. Vincent de Paul, Seventh Day Adventist, I'm not sure if they made the list up there, but there are just a ton of people asking to be involved, and so our calendar for feeding is nearly filled up and ready to go. You saw recently two clothing, one clothing drive, goods drive, and then the Saka Tumi drive last Saturday, all of which are huge successes, and the community is responding very positively. The money's expended so far, Right-Hand Auburn Board has spent $342,000 in both operations as well as rehab. There's a value estimated for the Right-Hand Auburn Meals Program of $54,000 donated, we have an in-kind value of donated works of $51,000, that's people volunteering to do some of these repairs and the like. To date, Placer County, you have paid for three months of operation, only two of which are captured here, and this is through December 31st, so November, December, and the city of Auburn has also participated in funding of the shelter. At the end of the day, there's two things we want to get across today. One is that we'd love to see the shelter continue beyond March 31st. Depending on how you want to configure that shelter, we would at least want you to consider that if you only do a 24/7 shelter going forward, at least through the summer months, that you allow us to at least expand to 60, because the demand is so high. Otherwise, we'd love to keep both the 24-hour and the overflow in place. Secondly, this speaks to the gap in services that are out there. The ability to move somebody quickly out of the shelter into mental health services, alcohol-drug treatment programs, is very, very limited here. What I didn't point out was of those referrals to some of these housing and drug treatment programs, we've had to go out of the area to make that happen, and that's becoming more and more difficult. So we have a lot of barriers, so we really ask that this board consider expanding other investments in mental health services for sure and alcohol and drug treatment. So with that, I believe that closes the presentation. Thank you.
Jack, do you have a question?
Yeah, thank you for this information, it's very important. On the financial piece, do you have those numbers available, like on a spreadsheet or something as to, you know, cash flows and those things?
Sure.
Okay, yeah, because I think it would be important for transparency purposes for people to see that, because there's a perception that, you know, Placer County is going at this alone. Second thing is, is that when you talk about the services that you're having to go after, when you say that you're going out of the area, where exactly are you going down in the Roseville area? Are you going outside of Placer County? Can you give me a little bit more?
I believe we probably have two placements in Lodi, maybe, maybe more. I mean, we're going out where the services are. Salvation Army in Lodi has a drug and alcohol, drug treatment program that we've gotten at least two people in. Sacramento County, other places outside of Placer County. We're up north a little bit, Grass Valley Services. I'm hesitant to speak to exactly where, because we're getting beyond the boundaries of Placer County, but this is where we're able to get people in the door.
And as far as interactions with law enforcement?
Yes.
Can you comment on that as far as what, you know, because there's a perception out there that, you know, everything that happens in North Auburn is a result of the shelter. Can you at least talk about the numbers?
Yeah, we've been having great, I can, I can give you specific numbers as we have ourselves, called for assistance in the first, June, July, August, September, October, November, we had 19 calls for assistance to 12 to the sheriffs, seven to ambulance. And remember, every time we call for an ambulance, law enforcement responds as well. So if there's any conflict in those numbers, it's because we might have called the sheriffs for assistance on 12 occasions, but the, every time we call for an ambulance, law enforcement shows up as well, so. But, and then after, December, December and January data, I have 11 calls for sheriff assistance and nine for ambulance. We're getting a much more fragile population with the overflow, and so in many cases, we have folks that are, we come in, whether it's hypothermia or other conditions, and we're needing to get them to the hospital. So those are the kinds of calls we're making, but I can't speak to the calls that might be happening outside of that area.
Sure, sure. Now, as far as those call, when you're saying, so it's not violent calls, you know, it's not, somebody's here with a knife or somebody here.
No, no. You know, really, it's somebody that, you know, we've not allowed in the shelter, and they may not be happy about that because of their condition. You know, we've set parameters for somebody to come into the shelter. Although it's a come-as-you-are shelter, there's a come-as-you-are, but there's a behavior expectation. And so if that's not going to be present, and somebody is not happy with that, and we think they might be out in the community doing something, we didn't notify police that we turned somebody away, and they may want to check in on it.
Have you turned, do you keep track of the folks that you've turned away?
Well, we have a ban list of who can't come in, that certainly includes all the 290s that might attempt to go to the shelter, and those that we have put on the ban list for either things they might have done elsewhere in the community. If we know that they've been involved in an assault, and we work with law enforcement to sort of know who we may not want in there, they could be included on the ban list. Lot of times, some of our, some of our ban list is short-term for this downpoint, somebody who might have been with us for a period of time, sober, working on a plan, who fall off the wagon, and they come back, and we can't reward them for that, and so they might be temporarily put on the ban list, so they might be out of the shelter for two or three or four weeks before they might be allowed back. So there's a two-pronged ban list that goes on there.
As far as the releases from the sheriff's jail there? Do you, do you know a percentage of those releases that end up in your shelter? Do you have any way to track that?
No, we know that it's a small percentage, and we know that it happens regularly, but it's a small percentage, but we'd have to drill down. We don't have, we don't know what their release, I mean, I know what the release pattern is, but I don't know.
You don't know what and who?
We generally know when they come in, they say, hey, I've just been released, I have no place to stay. Those folks aren't staying long in the shelter, but they are coming into the shelter. This is their, if they're homeless, they have no place else to go, and overflow is where they're ending up.
One of the things we drilled down on the last time you were here was the search procedure and making sure that, you know, weapons and alcohol and drugs and those kinds of things are not getting in the shelter. How is your process now? What's taking place there?
We implemented that very detailed search of all property coming into the shelter, and every time even one of our 24/7 guests leave, when they come back, and they might come back two or three times during the course of the day, they are searched again. For the overflow, we have a very detailed effort by staff that as they come in, everything that they possess and bring with them is emptied out, and everything is gone through to secure the fact that there's no weapons or drugs being brought in, particularly drugs that might not be theirs. So we look at prescriptions, we compare that with who they are, and if they're in possession of prescription that's not theirs, we would take.
So from the router to the tutor?
Yes, sir. Well.
As much as you can.
As much as we can, yes, yes.
I think that's all I've got right now, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Robert, I had one question. Leo, before you go, when you're talking about increasing guest occupancy in the 24/7 facility to 60, that would be implemented just by opening up that second level of bunk beds? Is that the idea?
It could be that, I'm going to do some, if that were the case, I'm going to, we'd need to do some safety adjustments to those bunk beds so that no one would fall out. Or it could be that if we close down overflow, I might place some beds in the overflow side to make that 60. So there's a couple ways to do it. In particular, if somebody is handicapped, I might be bringing in beds that aren't bunk beds to put them on that side, but we haven't decided, we were going to kind of go off of your decision to figure out the best way to handle that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Will that timer start on?
You're set, yeah, thanks.
My name is Susan Fox, I'm a resident of North Auburn, and the first thing I want to say is I'm not against a shelter, we need a shelter in this county. The problem that I have is that we're moving forward with decisions without looking at the full effect of the shelter and some other conditions. That perception that people think the shelter is causing crime, it's wrong, that's not the problem here, and I'll get to the problem in just a second. It's not about the shelter, it's about all the things that you let go on in this neighborhood that are affecting us. My first point on my presentation is the Marbit survey. I heard eight times this morning a comment on the Marbit survey being a basis for driving a lot of these decisions. When Dr. Marbit did his survey, he had no commentary to AB 109 or Prop 47 in there, did not look at crime, you cannot see the word parole, probation once appear in his report, you also don't see it in his Fresno report, which is the only other report he did during this timeframe in the state of California. All of his experience is in the state of Florida, 70% of his work has been done in Florida, and I'm just worried that we're making a decision based on a report from a person that doesn't understand the nuances of what's going on in our state at this time. And you can see on my page some of the data that I provided there. We've touched on the overflow shelter, that really is where our concern is. It is not what's in, the good works that are being done, that we're worried about. Those are not the people out terrorizing the community of North Auburn, it's the overflow or the people that don't even come to the shelter. And without you taking the overflow data and comparing it to the parole office data, comparing it to the probation office data, comparing it to the release data, you don't know what's going on, and you have no facts other than to say, we're complaining about not in our backyard, which really isn't the issue, the issue is the real world that we live in every single day in North Auburn. So I ask that you do that type of an analysis before proceeding with your decision. The big issue here is it's too much for North Auburn, you've got a parole office with AB 109 happening, you've got those parolees. I've asked questions about what you're doing with the parole office, and I have no answers at this point, and I'd like to see those answers before we move forward with a decision here. I believe they have an effect. I use the word I believe, I don't, don't know, can't get facts. I'll go to them myself, which will be my next step, but I really think that that should be taken into your consideration. And their site says that their responsibility is to work with the community, it's a local agent's office, so reaching out to them is probably a really good idea. As you consider your location for the shelter, we heard the other night at the meeting on the 4th, that all the mental health folks, and we saw the numbers up here percentage-wise already of the number of homeless folks that are dealing with mental health issues, they all go down to Roseville. In fact, there were complaints that we don't have the services up here, and then we'll have to transport them all down to Roseville. So why does it make sense here that we're doing this up here when the services aren't here? Just a couple more things, we put a picture in here to kind of show you what this looks like to us, and obviously with the DuWitt, the DuWitt Center, we've already heard today that that's a problem, that, you know, it's not in the right place, but if you look anywhere else in Auburn, why is that different? They're still going to trip through the communities, they're still going to trip through the shopping centers, they're still going to have issues, and it's not the people using the shelter. It's all of these things combined, and you're not addressing this problem holistically is the concern that we have. My last page, I've given you other ideas, you can certainly take a look at them in the presentation and consider those, and I would be glad to make myself available to communicate with you on any additional thoughts or ideas about other ideas on what we would do in Auburn. I shared with you on a little, on the last page, a little bit of incidents of just, I literally in five minutes gathered these, and I could go on and on and on and on about the number of incidents that are occurring in our North Auburn area. And, you know, there's definitely a perception that you don't care about us, that you've abandoned us, and we would like, as you are all doing your studies, to talk about these things in addition to all the other things you're talking about, because not once is to all the other things you're talking about, because not once this morning I've had anyone that's presented in terms of the recommendation to you talk about these issues, and that's really what we're asking for. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment. Very good, very good feedback. I really appreciate that. From the law enforcement and, you know, perspective, I know we talked about the effects of AB 109 with Dr. Marbit, and I know we discussed it when we were in criminal justice policy, but I think that was more anecdotal than anything else. And I think we've got some pretty solid numbers coming out over the last, what, four years since AB 109's been involved? So I don't, and I know that when we created the Criminal Justice Master Plan, we took all, a lot of that data and folded it in there. So I don't think it would be very, a very long process to pull that data out and be able to take a look at that, because it's a valid point. The other point is, is I believe it's SB forty-six, forty-seven?
Forty-seven.
Yeah.
Prop forty-seven.
Prop forty-seven, yeah. And that, I know that just came out a year or so ago, but there are some, there is some data. And again, that's another valid point that I think, now that we have Dr. Marbit back on to give us some advice, that he certainly should fold that information into the, into the analysis. And I say that because, you know, I really want this to be a full-covered process. I mean, we really have to drill down on what the causes are, the effects, and what the outcomes we want to be. It can't be just a Band-Aid. And that's really important to success, because if we want to lower costs, you know, and we want to create safety, and we want to resolve these problems, and they have, we have to attack it from a lot of different angles. And that's the most important thing that I see, is the more information that we have available to us to make these decisions, the better off, the better decisions that we're going to be able to make.
That's the ask, thank you.
And then don't leave it. Jennifer, and then Jim.
Yeah, I want to say thank you as well, Susan, for coming. You've asked a lot of really important questions. I have been trying to get some of the same data myself. I've reached out to the parole office to see what data the state can provide to us. And I'm interested particularly in AB 109 and Prop 47. I'm also interested in what the closure of parole offices in other areas in Northern California have done to this area. So what I'm trying to get from the state, and it's a little bit difficult, both just in terms of the gentleman, I need to get a hold of his schedule and mine working together, but also just getting data from the state, is, you know, what did our parole population look like pre-AB 109? What did our probation population look like pre-AB 109?
Two separate things.
Exactly. What did they look like post-AB 109? Same question for Prop 47, pre and post, for both of those parolees and probationers. And then the same for the closures of the office. And I'm trying to get that data with the intent of going to our state legislators to say, hey, the data shows that there's a problem, or the data doesn't show that we're a problem. We don't know what that data's going to show yet, because we don't have it. I think we all have some ideas about what it's going to show. But the, my intention is to actually go to our state legislators and say, hey, this is really a state problem that you've driven to the county and to local communities. And I would love it, once I have that data, once I've set up those meetings, if you would come with me and give your personal perspective to our state legislators. I did hear one piece of maybe-good news, I'm not sure. Apparently, there is potentially some discussion within the state of closing some additional parole offices. Well, I would be the first to advocate for closing the one in Plaster County and relocating it to Sacramento or somewhere, no offense to Sacramento. But, you know, I think there's things that we all need to do, working together as a community, to bring these issues to the attention of the state, because a lot of this, you know, unfortunately, has kind of trickle-down impacts from actions that were taken either at the legislative level or through a vote of the people. And you raise excellent issues, and we need to make sure that we gather the data, figure out what it means, and we address it. So thank you.
And Jim.
Thank you. I just want to echo some of the remarks, and I want to thank you for your hard work putting this together in a logical, comprehensive way. I think these issues need to be addressed before we move forward on any permanent site, and even when we think about prolonging the temporary shelter that we have now. So I'll be reaching out to you and discussing this further.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Susan.
Thank you.
Chair, again, if I may add some additional information, that's very relevant. In terms of mental health in Auburn, while our main outpatient office is at Kirby Hills in Roseville, we do have two mental health workers that visit the shelter weekly. We have our welcome center, where we encourage people to get engaged in our mental health system. We also have a homeless outreach and full-service partnership team that works across the county and works in Auburn. But the most important piece is our chief probation officer, Marshall Hopper, actually has information. He's had some contact with state parole, and if he's available, he might be able to add some information here to address some of those pertinent questions.
Thanks. And since, I was going to wait till we finished public comment, but I think the last time we met, I think I raised the question, somebody did, about your perception, satisfaction, lack thereof, as it related to the interaction interfacing with the homeless shelter and the operation of it, and the feedback was that you were very satisfied. And it sounds to me like that has been enhanced, but I'd like you to comment on that for the public.
Yeah, it's been very good. Volunteers of America runs a very professional program. I've had experience working in two other counties with shelters, and this is actually one of the better operations that I've witnessed.
Okay, thanks. And then I'm assuming that the board has, is being, is meeting currently or has met with the district attorney as it relates to the AB 109 problem and the changes in probation. And I know Marshall is here, I don't know if you want to comment now or at all, or might be effective, efficient use of the meeting to hear some of your comments before other people testify. So if you don't mind, if we could have our chief probation officer insert himself in front. Thanks.
Marshall Hopper, your chief probation officer. And I just want to make a couple of comments. I know some questions regarding numbers, but I think throughout my career working in probation, there's always been a homeless problem. And these have always been challenges for probation in general. I think that there's a couple of things to remember when we talk about homeless probationers. There are people that are on probation, that claim to be homeless, that aren't really homeless, because they don't want us going into their houses and bothering them and testing them and that kind of stuff. And then there's another population that are truly homeless. And so what I've done recently is I went over to the shelter, met with some folks there. I obtained the roster for the month of January, and I ran the individuals that I was, that I'm able to under the probation system. So to give you some perspective on numbers from probation, there are roughly about three thousand people on Plaster County probation. Now, I will make a note that they don't all live here, because we have individuals that come here and get into trouble and place on probation that live elsewhere. Those are the individuals that are out of county. I do know that we have two hundred and seventy-eight individuals on probation that live in the Auburn area. That's not Auburn city limits, that's the Auburn area just based on the address and the zip code. We have fifty-six people that claim to be homeless in Auburn, keeping in mind we have two types of homeless people, some that are true and some that are just avoiding deception or detection. Now, on that list in the month of January, I counted twenty-one individuals that spent at least one night in the shelter. So in January, twenty-one people that are on our caseloads spent at least one night there. I did have some conversations with Auburn parole, and I know that's been a topic of discussion. The numbers that I received from their director, Robert Ambroselli, just a few days ago, was that Auburn has one hundred and sixty-seven parolees in Plaster County. There are fifty-six active parolees in the city of Auburn, and eleven homeless individuals in Plaster County, six of those which are in Auburn. Those are the numbers that came to me by email from CDCR. Now, where is the probation department going with this? I obviously recognize that we have individuals there. I think it's important that we are focused on our mission, providing accountability through probation services, enforcing court orders, making sure that these individuals are compliant. But we're also looking at the opportunity, just like the studies show, services and how that works together. We have HHS practitioners working in our department, and we're looking at opportunities to provide services to these individuals in conjunction with whatever they're getting from the shelter as well. We've also had some discussions and a meeting set up with the CDCR director of parole between Mr. Brown and myself to discuss these issues, and I think we have a date set for about two weeks. I don't have the exact date. But as you can see, we do recognize that there are probationers on, or spending time in the shelter, and is it, it is an issue that we are working at. I think your board may recall recently that the department obtained some additional positions. We're in a recruitment process to fill those positions, and I have plans, as soon as we make it through the backgrounds, to have a probation officer assigned to a homeless caseload, partnering with Health and Human Services, providing direction services, and of course, accountability when needed. That's a basic overview of where probation's at with this. I'm certain there might be some questions from your board, and I'd be happy to answer what I can.
Thanks, Marshall. Jennifer.
Sorry, it's always me with my light on first. And so a question came up over the weekend from someone, which is, this is related to probation, not parole, so your area. When someone has community service as part of their probation, how do we, how do we manage that, particularly as it relates to the homeless population, to make sure that they're actually performing their community service?
Well, currently, depending on how many hours they have, five, ten, whatever, the probation officers sign that caseload, they will meet with that probation officer and have a discussion about community service at a nonprofit organization. There's a time sheet that's given where they, let's say they're going to this program, they have a log, they log the hours, we call and verify the hours with the organization, but it has to be approved ahead of time. It can't just be, we're going to go do community service. It has to be a formalized process, things like Salvation Army, you know, those kinds of places are all normal, normal places for community supervision.
And are we, so we had twenty-one people in January who were on probation, who stayed in the shelter at least one night. Are we coordinating with VOA and the shelter on those probationers to make sure that they really, you know, maybe are reporting for that community service, or maybe doing their community service through VOA?
Well, the individual probation officers that are assigned those cases are coordinating the programs, and that's kind of where I was leading to with the individually-assigned probation officer, to have a better communication with one person, so it can definitely enhance those operations as well. But the probation officers do coordinate that. Again, some probationers, formal cases, have a PO, all the informal cases do not. So sometimes, formal probation and informal probation are often confused and mixed up.
Right, okay. Thank you.
Thanks. I don't see any questions, does Tom Marshall? Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Chair.
I do. I'm sorry, Marshall, before you run away, I'm trying to. You weren't beating a hazmat retreat there. I'll give you credit for that. I'm just trying to internalize some of these numbers here. So I think you said we have about three thousand people in Plaster County that are on probation in some form or another, which if we're roughly three hundred and sixty thousand in the county, that's about point eight percent of our population. And you identified that in January, twenty-one of those folks took advantage of the shelter, so that means of the probation population of three thousand, where about point seven percent of those would have used the service of. So if there are the kinds of incidents that we are hearing about in the North Auburn area of criminal behavior, harassment, lack of respect for general civil order, it doesn't seem like it's necessarily this population that we've identified within our existing structures that would be, you know, as a part of the shelter anyway. I'm not saying that it wouldn't be other people that might not be on probation but aren't part of the shelter that might be involved in this kind of activity.
Correct, yeah. I mean, of the list that I mentioned, the twenty-one, I counted a hundred and one total participants in that month as well. So there are other individuals there that stay in the shelter as well that aren't on probation. So.
What is, what, that hundred and one number, what is that?
The hundred and one number was the number of people that we counted in January.
Right.
And so the relationship to probation.
Total users of the.
Total users that came through for one night or more.
Right, okay, got it.
Twenty-one of those were, so, so, yeah, so there are, there's a significant population that are not on probation as well in that shelter too, also in the community.
All right, thank you.
And I think, Mr. Chair, if I might, to follow up on Supervisor Yular's comments, I think your interpretation of those numbers really gets to the point that Susan raised, which is, it's not really an issue necessarily with the people in the shelter, but it's an issue of what's happening outside the shelter.
Right, have we created a culture in the environment that allows for this kind of behavior that kind of issues civil disorder, civil order?
Right, that may not have any connection to the shelter, or may, again, so.
And if I might add one thing that I, that I believe I forgot to mention, is in order to hold the folks that are homeless, whether they're in the shelter or not in the shelter, we've instituted a Thursday Appointment Day. When we take individuals on probation, we utilize a risk assessment. We've talked about that for many years, and how we base their needs and their services on a risk. But the stakes are increased when they're identified as homeless people, homeless folks out there in the community. So we want to really provide services. So we've instituted every Thursday in our Auburn Justice Center is the walk-in appointments for the individuals that are homeless. So it helps us communicate with them, it helps us get programs, it helps us keep track on them, in addition to RPOs going to the shelter, going out to the camp sites and checking on folks as well. But that's a significant component that we've instituted here in the last several months as well.
And then, Marshall, last question I'd ask you, and I wouldn't expect you to speak on behalf of the sheriff's office, but, you know, I think of when we have the Plaster County Fair. And I'll walk through the midway of the Plaster County Fair, and about every eighth or ninth group that I walk past is a probation department employee with a sheriff's deputy walking around the fair. And I'm wondering, have we increased foot traffic, physical presence of our sheriff's department folks in the area that we know has seen an increase in the kind of disregard for civil order in the North Auburn area? Are we increasing folks that are out of their cars, on their feet, just walking around the area, showing that visible presence that might otherwise deter some of this activity that we're, that we see people engaging in?
I can't speak on the total behalf of the question, but I can tell you what I have seen working in the Duett Center and listening to some of the radio calls, that the sheriff's department is actively out in the community, out there engaging with them, and even with their new, I believe it's called the POP officer, who's out there working and engaging in the community as well too. So I have, I have seen that.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Please.
My name is Susie Tronti, and I live in North Auburn. My name is Susie Tronti, and I live in North Auburn, California. I'd like to first state, you made the statement, Jennifer, that it's not really what's happening inside the shelter, that's the problem, it's what's happening outside the shelter. Last year, when you all voted in favor of camping on the government lawn and allowing a come-as-you-are, no accountability, overnight shelter, that was what drew transients to our area. And yes, the population of transients did grow at that time. So I just wanted to make that clear. And when you allow a wet shelter, come-as-you-are, no accountability, you are also being an enabler to the addicts that are in this area. So it's very important that I know a shelter is inevitable. And I feel we have a need for shelters for those who are truly needy. But I would like to urge Plaster County Board of Supervisors, when they're making this decision, to please make it not a wet shelter, come-as-you-are, no accountability shelter. I know that we're heading in that direction with Jason's guidance in directing, that there's more accountability now. It needs to increase, and there needs to be responsibilities and chores from these residents, and they really need to stay sober. If you do this, it makes, it's going to help weed out the transients, the criminal transients. transients, those who really don't want the help, that just want to bum around and beg for food. It's important that we weed those people out so that we do, we can focus on who is needy. I need to look at my notes because I added things as you guys were talking. I'd also like to speak to the low-income housing that Susan here was talking of. I know that there's a huge need for low-income housing, I personally know people who need low-income housing, who are living with parents, because the wages aren't keeping up with the cost of rent. There is a lottery system going on, from what I understand right now, to even get into low-income housing. For me, and I don't know if you guys have any power or ability to do this, but if you're going to grow the low-income housing residents, I ask that you allow this for sober people only, no addict should be able to get free housing. They should, life should be hard for them so that they can recover. To allow addicts into low-income housing is to allow them their freedom to do whatever they want, and this will give them an early grave. Handing things to the addict gives them an early grave, because you make life easy for them, and they don't want to get better.
Thank you.
Ma'am? What's her name?
Chief.
I want to, sir, can you let her back in the microphone?
Oh, sure.
First of all, I wanted to thank you for your patience while you were waiting there, and regarding the camping on the lawn, that, that wasn't a board action if I recall, was it? No, it just kind of happened, and so I don't know how that happened, but the board didn't authorize that.
You, did the board allow it to happen?
We had to pass ordinances to stop it from happening, so that's why it's gone.
Okay, so that went on for a while, ordinances weren't passed, and that, that also makes the point that you need to continue to pass ordinances to get these transients off the street and begging.
Right, and then the decision to allow the shelter was not a unanimous decision, so.
I understand that, I totally understand that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, my name is Richard Zerbo, labeled by Sacramento B. as chronically homeless and unemployable, I'm a homeless of Auburn.
Would you speak up a little bit, please?
Yeah, I'm a alleged chronic homeless person on the streets of Auburn. I tried to stay at this shelter before, but it's, there's a constitutional matter, you know, about, I can't use my freedoms of speech on a daily, you know, during my daily. I can't, I can't stay at their shelter because of, I do this, this is, I consider this freedom of speech right here. Which you guys have the ordinance in now, you know, and also they're, I can't really speak up very loud, okay? Due to, and also their search and seizure, it violates my Fourth Amendment rights, you know, a lot, a lot of the, on the streets are Americans and we're being sanctioned, you know, to use your shelter because of this, you know, and I don't think they have jurisdiction or constitutional rights, you know. Whereas a homeless shelter, I don't know who those people on the lawn were, where they came from, you know, but they're the reason they got a shelter, there's no reach done, outreach done for the people down at Target, you know, this just happened, you know, so I never knew that. We've talked about this six years before even ago, if they were put a shelter here, that we have to be against it because it will lose our rights, be more police harassment, more jail, you know, and I understand that, I read the paper said homeless, homelessness has increased in Auburn, it said homelessness has decreased, because we're supposed to get housing here in 90 days, you know, that was a thing that I read, I read. So if you're looking for someone to run your homeless shelter, I hope that you'll shop around Nevada County, Utah Phillips House, they look, look to be very successful in the, I think it's the 1977 Jimmy Carter Act, you know, about, you know, getting us housed, I'm not, I haven't seen nothing. See, people like me and my, my friends and family, they like to keep us where we're at, seems like everybody else gets helped, their business, without us, without us, they don't have a business, they don't have poster people they can take pictures of and throw in papers and, you know, we're always repressed. So if you don't like seeing me and you don't like seeing this, you know.
Thank you.
Find a business that can take care of us, they're not taking care of us, repressing us, we're Americans, and I'm not giving up my constitutional rights, non-negotiable, you know, so if you can find a solution around that, but expect to see us.
Thank you for your comment.
Would you like to testify now? Sure, yep, not a problem, yes, yes.
Good afternoon, my name is Annie Mager, I'm a resident of North Auburn, and I was not planning on getting up and speaking until Supervisor Euler was speaking to the probation office. At the October 6th meeting, you made a comment at the end of the meeting that you would not allow your teenage daughter to shop in North Auburn due to concerns for her safety with regards to transients. Has that changed?
Yes.
And what has changed that, because we have not seen any decrease.
I allowed her to come up with a group of her friends in January for being at Target and they went to Old Town Auburn.
As well. And after that meeting, in an interview with one of the local news stations, you stated that we all agreed that we need a shelter and want to help those that want the help, but the ones that didn't want the help, you were moving out of town. What have you done to do that?
You, you hopefully you heard the nature of my question to, to Mr. Hopper and, and have had the conversation with our under Sheriff about what we can do to increase our foot patrols in the area to hopefully encourage people along in that regard.
And if I could, purpose of this is, we're wanting to hear your comments, but really if you want to have a personal dialogue with Supervisor.
More than happy to.
I'm sure he'd be happy to, to do that, and not, not to cut you off, just, we're gonna have a lengthy time here, so.
Thank you.
Can you hear me well enough? Can you hold? Thank you. My name is Penny Jersey, and thank you for allowing us the opportunity to try to have a little say about this. I attended the meeting last Friday, I think it was, last week regarding the homeless shelter, and it immediately dawned on me that there's at least two issues here, the issue firstly of homelessness in general, which seems to be an epidemic not just here in Auburn but nationwide, and then secondly, of course, the issue at hand today is the relativity, the successfulness, the desirability or not of having a shelter here in Auburn. Firstly, I think that homelessness is the main cause and the main issue, and the reason for homelessness is, as you already know, I believe that it's mostly due to drugs, and unless something is done about the drug addiction, you're going to continue, and we will continue as a nation, not just a city, to have this epidemic of homelessness. With regard to the shelter, one of the things that struck me last week was when I heard that case management doesn't really currently include anything for accountability for the folks that are staying there long-term, quote-unquote, which are the 35 people that so far have been there over the last six months. The 35 people that have been staying there, not just in the overflow, as far as I understand, there's no drug testing, so we don't know if they're actually staying clean, if they're there for drug reasons. That drew a picture for me, if somebody just sleeping, getting up in the morning, having breakfast, and then going out about their business, I don't know what they're doing, and at the cost of either half a million dollars every six months, or a million dollars, I'm not sure which, if the county is providing 60% of the funding and right-hand Auburn through the churches is doing 40%, I'm coming up with a million dollars. I don't know if that's a million dollars every six months or, or a year, but that's a lot of money for 35 people, and out of the 35 people, it was my understanding that four of them were placed in private homes, unless the underlying cause for them being homeless has been taken care of, they can be placed with family members in private homes, but they'll just go back to being homeless and using drugs again. I saw a documentary that said that for drug users, those who go to rehab, only 2% of them don't relapse. That means 98% go back to using drugs and therefore potentially can be homeless. How big should this?
If you could wrap up your comments.
Okay. I don't, I don't see why a facility of 100, 100 beds, let's say, is needed if indeed we're only keeping about 35 people and helping to place them, why wouldn't it be just a smaller one? I think we could keep building bigger and bigger and more homeless shelters indefinitely. The last number I read in the paper was about 700 homeless people in Auburn, and it decreased during the winter, well, maybe people went somewhere else to a warmer location, and now that it's warming up, they'll be back. I just want to wrap up by saying I'm very concerned about the safety because of the homeless people. I see it myself when I go to the dollar store, I see them stealing from the vendors. At CVS Pharmacy, I see them, I've seen them taking liquor, somebody wanted to use Golden One, and they got punched in the face while they were standing at the outdoor teller. I'm afraid to go there, and I need to, to go to the doctor frequently, get pharmacy, et cetera. I'm not saying that the folks in the shelter are causing that, I, I, I don't, I hear that they're not, and that they're receiving help, I'm just wondering, oh, this is really important, the case management.
And I'm sorry, if you could, could you wrap up your comments, please?
Okay, I'm concerned about case management, who's behind the curtain, because without any services, there's nothing there, and thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, my name is Bill Harbin, I am a resident of North Auburn, been there for 30 years. I stand opposed to the location of the wet shelter, you've all heard the reasons in all the various meetings you've had. A little bit of history, my middle daughter, through our church, decided about five years ago to help the homeless, she put together 20 backpacks full of toiletries, clothing, things like that, things that she thought people would need, and we spent two days driving around Auburn and North Auburn looking for homeless people, she was able to give away 10 of the 20 backpacks, those are the only people we found. That's different now. Just driving here today, I counted eight on the way down on Highway 49. Mr. Brown here, who, when he worked in Nevada County, I must commend him, did a great job of supervising the homeless shelter there, the hospitality house, and it was a huge success. It was a success because it was a dry shelter, it was not located near schools, and it was supported by the community. It worked, and it's still there, it's still working. We have not duplicated that model here in Auburn. We have switched to a different model, one that brings us the worst of human behavior, which is a problem. One thing that nobody's talked about so far is, to the best of my knowledge, let me just show you this map of Placer County, it's one off of your website, it's, it just color-codes where the population is. Of course, up in the mountains, fewer people, down here in Auburn, a little bit more, and of course, down in the valley, that's where most of the population resides. Well, where there are people, that's where there's going to be jobs and opportunities. And so I am not opposed to helping, I mean, not opposed to helping the homeless, I am all for it, but at the same time, we have to give them those opportunities that they seek and need, and so that's why I stand opposed to the current location of the shelter. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Lisa Lindgren, and I just kind of want to go over a few things because you kind of touched on some bases. I first wanted to say that I've been going to all the shelter meetings, and I just wanted to tell Pastor Dan, thank you, I saw him earlier but don't see him now, unfortunately, he has stopped feeding the homeless, I don't know if it was by choice, but he has discontinued that program, which I think has helped a lot, I've seen a difference somewhat in the community, and my other thing is, I, and no disrespect to the Sheriff's Department, because I don't know what communications that you guys have with them, I live on Atwood, I haven't seen any foot patrol, I can tell you, I live in a bowl, I go from Atwood to Bell, and that's probably as venturous as I get, and I'm not seeing the higher presence of the patrol that you're talking about. I know they have different beats, I know they have officers assigned for that, I'm not saying they don't help each other, but if you're wanting more patrol, more presence, I'm not seeing it, and I don't really know how much control you have of that, because I know that plays a part in funding and things like that. My other issue, well, and the reason why I say that is because, because I live on Atwood, from four to five, I see them walking down to the shelter, most likely the overflow, going in for the night, or maybe it's not, maybe it's for people who are getting fed, but I do see a lot of activity during that time, heading that way, and in the morning. Also, again, I want to reiterate what he said, that there is not a lot of opportunities here in Auburn for people who need jobs and things like that, and I also wanted to thank the board for kind of pushing the fact that they need to look outside Auburn, North Auburn for a location, because that really hasn't been done. I think, you know, I've kind of, was against the shelter at the very beginning, and I said, you know, that's not fair, we do have a problem, so I kind of said, okay, we do need a shelter, but I don't really think it's very fair for them not to consider other areas and keep it right here in the North Auburn, because they were asked to do that, and I don't feel that they complied to what I was expecting. So again, I ask you to keep reinforcing that they look outside of Auburn also, and kind of common sense to me, that I've looked at the locations where they have placed, and still, they're close to schools, there's issues, I mean, it just makes common sense to me to not have it in those locations or near that, so I don't really understand why they're still bringing up locations that typically, you know, could be harm to children or an issue. I mean, again, I'm still dealing with my child that has now anxiety because she had an unfortunate episode with a homeless person, so again, thank you, and I appreciate that you review this and take all of our thoughts and considerations.
Thank you.
Can I push the button?
No, no, you're safe.
Hi, my name is Merlin Glass, I've lived in Placer County for the last 34 years. I only have anecdotal evidence dealing with the homeless population, I was in the fire service for 36 years, the last 25 in the city of Sacramento, and Sacramento's been in the, the news a lot lately for their attempts at dealing with the homeless issue. In decades past, we called homeless by different names, they were hobos, they were bindlestiffs, they were tramps, they were indigents, they were transients, all this stuff, mostly defined by their actions. Today, we just call it all homeless, and it kind of diffuses the conversation, it kind of makes it this, this homie kind of feel to it, and it's really not. I worked a lot in the firehouses surrounding Station 14, Station 2, Station 5, and within the triangle, those three fire stations, I had Loaves and Fishes, Volunteers of America, and the Salvation Army. All write down, you can see it every morning, write down, you take 160 down into 12th Street, down into Sacramento, and you just look out your window. Over the years, working at Station 14, two-story firehouse, the kitchen was upstairs, I would look down on the street, and there was Loaves and Fishes, and when it's. And when it started, it was small, okay? Today, it's a robust organization, they got Rainbow Park, the Salvation Army's right across the street. The point being is that if you build it, they'll come, to coin a movie phrase. The reports that you have, the probation officer mentioned some statistics, they're low. We were instructed to not be critical in our report writing as to why that person needed medical aid, okay? But you could look at the address, and look at the time of day, and determine that that was probably a homeless person that was, you know, been drinking all night, slept in the bushes, somebody thought he was dead. We call out there, we roust them a little bit, and they wake up and walk away. You know, it's one of those things that you, Board of Supervisors, are a firewall for the citizens that live their lives in your communities. And where you place this thing is a strategic dedication to an issue, but it has to work. What has transpired in Sacramento is that very few of those people, over the years, are actually Sacramentoans, okay? They have come from other places. And so, as the features of these facilities get better and better and better, it attracts people to it. And so, that's why you're feeling this issue between people and where they live. And I'm not saying that a lot of people are undeserving, because certainly they are, but as representatives and as citizens, we need to get a good bang for our buck. And if you're spending billions of dollars for a few number of people, I'm not sure that's addressing the issue. That their behavior and their actions should dedicate what services they get. And it's an unfortunate thing, you can't save everybody. But what you do to a community by placing it here in Auburn could have a detrimental effect for a long time, because this will only get bigger. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. Hi, my name's Eric Branfas. I wanted to say hi to everyone back here, because this is facing in one direction, but we're all talking to each other.
If you could direct your comments.
So, yes, absolutely, I will. So, I am an employee at the North Auburn Shelter that is in question, and my job specifically is working in what has been considered the overflow, and I can guarantee you is not a wet, come-as-you-wish shelter. I know that has been said multiple times, but we have, I myself, check people in, we check, I don't have a breathalyzer, but there's some very easy, simple ways to find out if somebody's intoxicated. And we have very strict, I wouldn't call morals, but it's a way that we interact with each other, and it's a way that we ask our residents to interact with our staff and to interact with each other. And our residents are told, they have a piece of paper that they know when they come in, that if they're disrespecting staff, if they disrespect each other, they bring substances onto the property, they bring weapons, if they make weapons, if they try to access the parts of our facility that are restricted to staff, places where we keep food, places where we keep extra supplies, they are immediately exited from the building. There's a zero tolerance for breaking these very simple guidelines, which maintain the peace and order of our community inside the shelter. So that is how we maintain our order. And at 5:00, we do have people that come to check in, and so we do see a direction of people moving there. And at 7:00, we ask them to leave our overflow facility. And then, so they are out in the community. We deal with a great deal of mental illness, a great deal of mental illness. Throughout the night, I work midnight to 8:00 AM. A large deal of, a large portion of what we deal with is people on new medication that is not working with their system, people that have been, that are dealing with domestic violence, along with mental illness, and they sometimes, they're just seeking a safe place to be for their night, and they have, they're not abusing substances. I'd like to reiterate that. And because it hasn't been said yet, a great deal of people that do not have the ability to get proper medication, self-medicate with what they have access to. And we do allow people to buy alcohol and cigarettes in our stores. We do not stop them from purchasing it, and so they're self-medicating with the drugs that we provide legally in our businesses. And so, that is a great deal of what we're dealing with around the shelter, self-medication by people that are not receiving mental health services. Not from, I'm not saying any counties are involved, this is, like we said, something that's dealing with people coming from other areas. I grew up in here, I've been living in Placer County and in Nevada County since 1988. I have, I was told growing up to avoid the Auburn Greens, because it was a bad place to go, and that it was full of crime. And that was in the 80s and 90s. So, the dialogue might change on who we're afraid of, but there's always a dialogue about being afraid of somebody, right? And so, it's continuing, we're just shifting the focus to somebody else. I'd also like to reiterate that, growing up, we're looking at some of our natural areas, I have, since 1988, I've run into many homeless people camping on BLM land, and camping out in these woods that we see on these pictures. I believe, I don't know, because we don't have statistics, I believe what a great deal we're seeing is people that are finally seeking help out of these woods, they're seeking help.
I'm sorry, I'm going to have to ask you to wrap up your comment.
I will definitely wrap up my comment. So I would ask us to please address our mental health issues. I understand we're calling it homeless, but we have a great deal of mental health issues. We have residents that are fantastic people, they're trying very, very, very hard to get back on their feet, to get back and to be what we call a productive member of our society. And we just ask you to bear with us. We're new, we're fresh, we have all new staff, and we're doing this with volunteers, and we're doing this with the help of our community. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And then, is there anyone, are there other people besides those in line who want to speak? Okay, I'm going to add these two, and then we're going to cut it off. Two of us have a 1:30 meeting, and the board still has to deliberate, so anything you can do to save us time would be greatly appreciated. Thanks.
Okay. My name is Bridgette Barnes. Thank you for the opportunity for speaking. I'm the president of Right Hand Auburn, and I'm also a resident of Auburn, and I live close to the shelter. The reason I stood up is I just, the PowerPoint that you saw and that you've had presented to you is a product of both Right Hand Auburn and Volunteers of America. The reason I wanted to stand up was just to correct some of the statements that have been made, and to emphasize another, and do this as quickly as possible. The first is that all of you have borne with us, as I came up here and started the Please in the summer of 2014, that got the ball rolling. And the focus at the beginning was, it was going to be an emergency nighttime shelter. That's what I said, that's what I meant. The problems that we have encountered, and what I mean by problems, I mean the conditions of the people that have come to the shelter for help have forced certainly the board at Right Hand Auburn to reevaluate what is needed for the community. And I'm talking about the broader Placer County community. We, as a group of volunteers, we can't stretch down to South Placer, and we'll do our best to support, but we don't have the ability to make recommendations for that kind of a population down there. But I can talk to it up here. And one of the major portions of our request, when you consider the RFP, is that that RFP consider detailed mental health assistance for the overall homeless community. I certainly wouldn't argue that many of the people who have mental health issues also either medicate off-site or misuse medication. We're only able to take away from them what they have on them, if it's not authorized or it's illicit, but that is being done. The gentleman right before me made it very clear, those are the policies at the shelter. If somebody's doing something we don't know about, we're trying to catch it. The community asked to make sure that we would check the bags and verify, and we do it religiously. The community claimed that just having a shelter would encourage misbehavior. And so, the shelter has actually put in a policy of no panhandling, goes out and meets with the businesses, gets the names and pictures of anybody who shows up. If those people are caught coming into the shelter, they're kicked out for several nights. The whole idea is to make the shelter a better neighbor. Now, are there improvements that we can make? I'm sure there are, and we will do our best. But the purpose of putting the money in there that you had commented in was I wanted the community to know the huge private investment that has gone in so far. Now, if this is allowed to continue over a longer period of time, the county will, over the next year, be in a position where they equal the communities and Right Hand Auburn's and the church's contribution, but we're not even close to that yet. Thank you, I won't elaborate anymore. Take care.
Hello, my name's Ken Larson, a 30-plus-year resident of Placer County. I'll keep this real short. Clearly, the issues around homelessness are complex, they're going to require complex and creative approaches. Not every approach is going to work right out of the chute. I would just encourage you, there's been a lot of progress made. If you think back, as she was just saying, to 2014, when some proactive activity was beginning here, we've come a long way, we've learned a lot, and there's a lot more to learn. And I would just encourage you not to back away from the progress that's been made. Continue to struggle with it and wrestle with it, continue to work with the issues around law enforcement and probation, but please, don't back away. This is too big an issue, we've come too far to really give it up at this point. That's it.
Thank you.
I'm Veronica Blake, CEO of Placer Community Foundation, and I'll just backstop what Ken said to make it quick. I really appreciate your effort to work on this issue. I know it's complicated, and it's not popular, and you're doing the tough deed of getting us all through it, and you're listening to the voices, and we really appreciate that. We know it's good for the community. I'd also add that our foundation office is located in Old Town Auburn, and we have had homeless people in the past sleeping in our elevator, sleeping under our building, and since the shelter was built in Auburn, we've been able to make a successful referral to that place and have a better choice, and we're grateful for that. Both the board and staff from the community foundation have been working in your workgroups. We're members of the South County Work Group, the Auburn Work Group, and the permanent housing workgroups. If you all haven't done so already, it's helpful to go to the shelter and walk through it and see what it is and what it is not. I think I had my eyes open to all of those things, I heard all the myths in the community. And then, when I went and saw the actual work being done by Right Hand Auburn and Volunteers of America, I was very impressed at the fact that they're helping people who want to be helped out of homelessness. And then, just kind of in closing, I'd say, you know, the issue around affordable housing and workforce housing has really come to our attention through this work, and it's something that's going to be just as complicated as a discussion around the homeless shelter. So I appreciate you taking time with that, we are going to stay involved on that issue. We know that housing affects a broader community than just the homeless, it affects our teachers, it affects our workforce, our service workers. And then, I would also like to add that the Bell Gardens issue that was uncovered during that is important. You know, 64 units of affordable housing in the Auburn area is something that's needed. We had eight people at one point in the homeless shelter that had housing vouchers, but we had no housing for them to go to. But thank you so much for making this a priority, and we really appreciate the good work that you're doing, and we've absolutely loved working with our county partners on this issue.
Thank you.
My name is Lisa Joseph-Bach, and I'm with Placer People of Faith Together. I'm a community organizer, and I work and live in Placer County. I'm here today in support of you taking on this issue as the Board of Supervisors. As an individual and as a veteran, I experienced homelessness at one point in my life. People didn't see me. I applaud your efforts to continue to take this issue on and not abandon us, not abandon the people in Placer County that are homeless. We know the studies show that 85% of us graduated high school here. We're not coming from other places. As evidenced by the number of individuals who worked in the workgroups, all of the passion out in the audience, and your dedication. It is a complicated issue, I realize that. I thank you for staying engaged, staying at the table, and continuing to dialogue, and I am support in the partnership of the shelter being in Placer County. Thank you.
Thank you. One last person. Come forward, state your name and...
Leo and I have been working together for 25 years. My name is Bill Boudier. I'm from Roseville, and I've been very active in the homeless issue over the last 25 to 30 years. And I was very instrumental in helping getting the Gathering Inn off the ground with the help of Supervisor Homes. And I had to retire in 2006 because of health issues. But I noticed that there's a lot of talk about, you know, the problem of homelessness that's going on between Roseville and Auburn, and even the talk of collaboration between Roseville and Auburn in the form of the shelter, referring their overflow, some of their overflow people to the Gathering Inn, when that occurs. And I was thinking that it might be just better to, in the interim, instead of having a bigger shelter, is cooperating more with the Gathering Inn and their program. They've been very effective over the last 12 years, and have generated most of their funds through private contributions. Recently, the city of Roseville and Rockland have stepped up and donated money to help the Gathering Inn going. And I would think, seeing how much money is going into the Right Hand project from the Board of Supervisors, that some money should be going into the Gathering Inn project. And I think that with that, you'd have a lot more collaboration between the two areas. And I think it would be very helpful to resolving the problem of, you know, the visible problem of transients or homeless people in the area. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bill, I want to, I just want to thank you for your leadership on this issue over your long career.
Oh.
And to let you know that this past year, the county has put in $80,000 into the Gathering Inn.
Okay.
And to let you know that the people in the South Placer area are looking at that model, and they're using their, they're taking what is working in South Placer before they move forward with a homeless shelter down there, so.
Very good.
But it's because of your leadership that, I think.
Okay, well, thank you. I'm privileged to be part of the South Placer group also. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Okay.
Here you go. Thank you.
With that, staff is looking for a direction regarding procurement process, or I guess any methodology by which to do a site selection essentially, as well as direction regarding an RFP request for proposal, basically going out to bid with regards to operating the existing facility in North Auburn. Correct?
That's correct.
And I think it's appropriate that, also, if staff, if board members, colleagues have any comments with regards to issues that are raised with regards to our affordable housing stock, we could provide, in fact, let me kick off with, does staff have any plans to bring that particular issue back to the board at any particular point in time for...
As a matter of fact, we do. At your Board Priorities Workshop, we identified affordable housing in all of its different forms as an issue that's pervasive across Placer County, and one that we really need to mount some sort of an effort around. Furthermore, I've had preliminary conversations with my counterpart city managers, and they too recognize that as a priority for their communities as well. So, looking forward to partnering with the community foundation and others to really do a deep dive on the whole affordable housing issue, which is, of course, at the root of what we're talking about today.
No date, though, yet.
That, you know, it's kind of a budget priority for the coming fiscal year, that doesn't mean we're going to wait until July to get started. So we'll start some of the basic organizing now. I've been talking with Jeff Brown and Michael Johnson about the opportunity to look between SEDRA and HHS internally, so that is an active conversation.
Excellent, thank you. Jim, your lights on, so you get...
Thank you. Part of the discussion here has been about affordable housing and about mental illness. And I know there's a program called the Advocates for Mentally Ill Housing. Is there someone here that can explain that program to our board, and what the county's role is with that?
Sure. They're a partner that we work with. They have developed affordable housing, particularly for individuals with serious mental illness. We partnered with them using Mental Health Services Act dollars to develop two buildings. One is called Placer Street, and the other is called Timberline. Timberline is a single-family residence with five rooms. Placer Street are six units, two bedrooms each. And so, we actively house individuals there that are homeless, and we've had very, very good success with that partnership. They also are a contractor to us with our CalWorks program, with our Supportive Housing program. So they're working on trying to get individuals rehoused that come through our CalWorks system. And then, they also provide a shallow rent subsidy to some families that are identified through that program also.
So how are they, who determines that they're qualified for the AMI housing?
The AMI housing, that's a combination of criteria administered by our Adult System of Care and AMI housing. So we have agreed criteria.
So they're in a... So they're in a program addressing their mental illness?
Those individuals are, most of those individuals are part of our full-service partnership, so we have intensive case management assigned to those individuals.
So some of those people are housed in houses throughout the-
That's correct.
-throughout the area. And how much of our mental health services funding has we, have we put into that? Do you have any idea?
I don't, I will have to get back to you with that information.
All right. It just seems to me that this is a good model to address homeless, mentally ill people, and I think we'd be well-served to increase whatever funding we can to address that particular issue.
Yeah, it's an evidence-based practice, we've had great results with the model.
All right, thank you.
Okay, Jack, then Jennifer.
Yeah, I'm satisfied with what I've heard today with regards to going out for an RFP. You know, there's pros and cons, you know, the way that this came about, sole source net versus a proposal, but if people feel more comfortable that there may be somebody out there that might provide a better option, whatever, I don't see a problem with that. I think we need to investigate that and finally put this issue to rest, if there, if it is an issue. With regards to the overall shelter, I want to go back to why we're, why we're having this discussion. And it wasn't because the Board of Supervisors said, "We want a shelter in Auburn." It's, if you go back to the Marbert Report, the recommendation was that there be a shelter to serve the population of Auburn, as well as a shelter to serve the population down in the more urban area of the county. That's why we're here. So I just want to go back to that basic, it wasn't, someone said, "Auburn is where it needs to be," all right? It's because our expert said, because of the different populations, because of their, and if you go back to the report, the report basically outlines the criteria as to why he made that recommendation. It's because they live here, they were born here, they went to high school here, it's all, it's all in the report. So I don't have a problem looking, you know? And as this process moves forward, we may come to a point where things change, and maybe, maybe it ends up being something less than it is now up in Auburn, and maybe something more than it is now down in the valley. I don't know that yet. But we need that information in order to be able to make that decision, okay? So I don't have a problem looking, and at the same time, calling that, having our probation department work to get that information that we were talking about as to root causes, you know, under Prop 109, under Prop 47, you know, under the, and also, you know, because we've got one more coming, from what I hear from the governor's office, that there may be a smaller 7,000 population, number of population maybe coming back to some places within the state. So I think it's prudent that we get that data on the same track moving forward, and see where, see where we are. So I'm comfortable with both the recommendations that Health and Human Services is bringing forward today. You know, not picking a spot, not entering into a contract, but looking for a spot that would be the best, you know, with community input, with whoever needs to input on that, to at least have the discussion. And that's where I'm at.
Jennifer.
Thank you. Yeah, we're asked actually today to ask, to provide staff with direction on two different items. The first is regarding a procurement process for potential acquisition of a site for possible permanent homeless shelter in the Auburn area. I would like to expand upon what I said earlier today when we started this conversation, which is, we need to look, as Jack said, more than just in the Auburn area, we need to understand what Dr. Marbert's recommendations really were trying to get to, and that was the regionality of the issues that face us, so Eastern Placer, the greater Auburn area, and the South Placer area, Roseville for shorthand, I think. So I'm fine saying, "Let's continue looking." I certainly didn't see anything in the sites that were potentially identified that leapt out at me, that made me say, "That's the site." So I think we need to keep looking, I don't think we've identified the appropriate location. In terms of the RFP, I absolutely support going forward with an RFP, and I really look forward to seeing who might apply for that, and what services we might be able to bring to the table that we're not providing now. Supervisor Holmes' comments about housing and mental health services, I'm gonna just second 1,000 percent. We need to get to the root causes of homelessness. Homelessness is not caused by being homeless. Homelessness is caused by lack of affordable housing and mental health issues largely. There are some exceptions to that rule, but we could take on so much of what we all agree is a societal problem, if we actually address the underlying issues rather than the symptom that we're seeing. Those are my comments.
Kirk.
Yes, Mr. Chair, the only thing I want to add is, Becky, as the CEO's analyst for our law enforcement folks, I would very much appreciate a report back to our board from the Sheriff's Department and probation combined, looking at the situation as it exists on the ground in North Auburn, with their thoughts as to what additional resources might be necessary from our board to increase patrols in the area, and I'm talking guys out of the cars, on the ground, walking through the commercial centers, walking through the government center, getting to know people out there, understanding who should be in certain areas and who shouldn't be. We need more of a show of force in the area. And so I would very much like for our board to be able to digest what would that mean in terms of increasing patrols in that area from a budget standpoint.
Jim.
Yeah, Susan, again, I appreciate your committee looking at, for sites in North Auburn. I don't see any that excites me at all. And I don't see the wisdom of moving forward, looking for additional sites in North Auburn until we know what's gonna go happen in South Placer, what they're gonna do. Because if we keep going down this path up here, and they're not doing anything down there, it's just not equitable, and it's not a regional solution. So that would be my motion, not to waste any more staff time looking for another site in North Auburn, and then let's wait and see what happens with, with South Placer. And I don't have a problem, I don't think anybody is gonna do a better job than Volunteers of America, but if it's the wisdom of the board to go out for an RFP, as long as it doesn't take too long, what would be the cost of that? Do you have any idea?
I think our goal would do, to do an RFP would be, would be within three weeks. Our goal would be to get, return back to your board sometime in March with a recommendation for a contract.
All right. So that's my motion.
Okay. Is there a second to the motion?
I don't think we're being actually asked for an action.
I know, we're not being asked for a motion, sorry, but there was a motion-
I'll second it.
Oh, well, okay, that's my direction, I was-
Okay, now, but I'm, maybe a little bit of clarification, your motion was specifically to not go through a procurement process in North Auburn until such time that there was something more definitive in South Placer?
No, I didn't want to spend more time looking for another site in North Auburn without knowing what's gonna happen in South Placer. I don't see the wisdom of going out for a procurement, but if this, if that's what the board's wishes are, I would concur, but I don't see the wisdom in going out for a procurement. So, that's, that's-
I think the idea what Supervisor Holmes is getting at is the same point I made, which is, this has to be a regional solution that we're looking at, Eastern Placer, Central Placer, and South Placer as well. And we need to be, we have the bandwidth, we have the staff, we have the dollars to take a look at all of those at the same time, but I think going down just one path doesn't make a lot of sense.
Okay, just wanna make sure, everybody's clear?
Am I paraphrasing?
Then I'm clear, all right? So when we, there's a motion and a second, essentially to do a whole-county strategic look at site selection. All those in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries, so, but, and then I'll just finish with my comments. I didn't hear anything from my colleagues that I disagreed with. I would only want to emphasize, I think, that as per several comments today, and trying to amplify the notion of having a holistic, strategic perspective on the whole question, so the affordable housing, the mental health issues, I'm getting good feedback that we've gone a long ways in opening this facility, that there's good integration with HHS in that regard. But I guess as we move forward, both with the RFP process for the operation of the facility itself here in North Auburn, as well as a holistic look in all of the populated part of Placer County with the two sites, North Auburn and South Placer, that we integrate all of those questions, including something new that came up today, at least in terms of public comment, but I think what, an issue that's been brought to the attention of the board is the prospective impact and blurring of the homeless question as it relates to AB 109 probation issues. I think we're gonna see some emerging requests by staff as it relates to those facilities and some issues related to that, and so my emphasis, again, is just on that total strategic, holistic approach, both for communication purposes to our constituents, as well as having the smartest implementation of county resources. Okay, with that, unless there's anything else, we are adjourned. Kirk and I, you were only a little bit late for our meeting.